This is still considered an open and public meeting. For the work session, we welcome members of the public who may be watching our usual live video feeds on the council numbers, or excuse me, on the council agenda page, YouTube, SLC TV, or Facebook Live. Today is a work session only, and there is no public comment scheduled. However, next Tuesday, October 20th, will be the next opportunity for the public to comment during our regular 7:00 PM formal meeting. Your feedback is always welcome, and you can reach the city council anytime by mailing us at P O Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 84114-5476, or emailing us at council comments at slcgov.com, or by calling our 24-hour comment line at 801-535-7654. We will now move on to our work session items. Our first item is related to updates on the mayor's proclamation declaring local emergencies for COVID-19, the March earthquake, and the September 8th windstorm. We have for, we have joining us for this item Mayor Aaron Bendin Hall, Chief of Staff Rachel Otto, and Chief Administrative Officer Lisa Schaefer. We will go ahead and, oh, let me. Lisa or Rachel, do you want me to read through the questions that we submitted in advance, or do you guys just want to take us through?
We will, well, your preference. We're prepared to give you a couple high-level updates, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions, so whichever order you prefer.
Okay, well, we only have two questions previously submitted, which is explaining the difference between orange and yellow risk levels, and then what the city is most concerned about in terms of what events or absence of restrictions does the administration see as the most important to come under regulation moving to orange? So I'll let you go ahead and speak to that.
Sure, thanks. Thanks again, as always, for the time on your agendas to talk about these things. As you know, last Tuesday, the mayor made her formal request to the county to then take to the state to increase our restriction level to orange, based on the three weeks of increasing case numbers we had been seeing and other troubling data, including ICU utilization and other indicators that, you know, we've been working with the state on to keep track of throughout this pandemic. The biggest differences really for us in trying to, you know, dial in what we were hoping to see with a move to orange were the social guidelines in the Utah Leads Together Plan. So that's, you know, number of people that can gather socially would be reduced back to 20. Masks would be required even outside if you couldn't maintain six feet of social distance. And a couple of other social guidelines, but really, that's, that's really based on the data and what we had been hearing from the county and the state over the past several weeks, that seemed to be the biggest issue is, you know, not that we are seeing a lot of spread in workplaces, or in businesses, or restaurants, or anything like that, but it is really the fact that we're not taking these precautions home with us and into other people's homes with us. So that was the impetus for the request. We had some, you know, productive meetings and conversations last week with, with Department of Health and others on this. While the governor has, did not make a formal decision on our request, as I'm sure you all know, he's holding his press conference right now, so I'm still trying to listen and process what's happening at the state level right now. But based on what I'm hearing and what I'm sure y'all are hearing too, there's a total rework of the color system at this point, and it now is going to a different system based on transmission rate and data. And so we will no longer, I think, based on what I'm understanding, operate in colors, but will operate on positivity rate, ICU utilization, and the data. And so each county, it sounds like, will be placed into a restriction level. I think we will be in a moderate restriction level. That, I think, that remains to be seen, but I think counties will all be placed today, and then specific precautions will be taken in each county. But it sounds like a mask mandate will be required in most places in the state, regardless of your restriction level. That'll be the recommendation and, and potentially the mandate for most places across the state right now. So we're, we're happy that the state is taking some, taking a really hard look at this and really taking some, some leadership here, and we're, we are hoping that this will signal to everybody that, you know, this is a, we're not on the right path right now, and we need to get back onto that right path. I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of great specifics for you on this new system.
That's okay. I know it's unfolding right now, so. Lisa or Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
Just that I'm really grateful.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions on this? Councilmember Romano.
Thanks. I've, I've been trying to listen as well, and it sounds like we're in a high transmission category. They just basically said that. But anyway, my question actually has to do with the parking restriction or the moratorium on the parking enforcement. I know that that was one of the early emergency declarations, kind of stopped that in that metered parking has resumed. I, I, and I have a lot of constituents asking about the 48-hour rule specifically, and whether that will be enforced or not, and I'm just not sure what to tell them. And I don't necessarily feel like, there may be reasons why we continue not to do that, but I just, if they're, give me an update as to what I should tell my residents that are asking about that, whether we will resume it soon, or if not, why?
Yeah, and I, I know that this, the parking situation has been confusing, and as we have, you know, we, we kind of implemented the parking restrictions in stages, and we've rolled it back in some stages too, and we're seeing different problems in different neighborhoods that also wraps into the very specific problems around and impacts from people who are experiencing homelessness, who are using their car as a shelter. And that, you know, of course, creates some, some special, some special needs and a different approach there too. So the plan had been to, to begin enforcement again. I think we probably need to just pause and evaluate whether or not, you know, based on this new data and new restrictions, whether we need to think through that a little bit more, now that people maybe will be staying home and, and working from home more. I'm not sure. Mayor, do you have anything you want to discuss with that, or Lisa?
No, I will, not, not just yet, but Councilmember Romano, we hear that, and when we put those, we put that in place, we recognized at the time that there were a lot of situations where, that were caught up in that sweep, that maybe we wish we could have kept some regulation on. And we're open to meeting with you and talking with any other council members about what kind of shifts we might want to make as a city, and I'd be happy to chat with you.
I have a, a couple of updates on the emergency proclamations and how Emergency Proclamation 14 affected parking, and how Emergency Proclamation 15 sort of led to 14. Is anybody interested in that? Because it is quite hard to follow, because I don't know if you noticed, that was 14 and 15, emergency proclamations of 2020. So I did ask our legal department to kind of look at that and analyze. So I'm just going to read this, because Katie did a really great job of putting together what Proclamation 14 did and what Proclamation 15 does. So I'll start with 15, which is establishing a local emergency for the windstorm, right? It also waives any land use ordinances to allow a temporary shelter at sorts of multicultural center during the windstorms. So that was Emergency Proclamation 15. 14 actually did the following. It rescinds the mass gathering restrictions defined as 100 people or more. Private and public gatherings will still be required to comply with the Utah Leads Together Plan for Yellow, which, as we've just discussed, is now completely obsolete, so we will have to revise that. Rescinds the restrictions on use of parks and open spaces in Salt Lake City. Gatherings and use of parks and open space will still be subject to the Yellow, again, obsolete as of now. Rescinds the restriction on acquisitions of grave sites at the city cemetery. Rescinds the suspension of the parking ordinances, including storage on streets. This will go into effect on September 22nd, and between the date of the proclamation and the 22nd, the city will provide notice and warning that the ordinances will be enforced again after the 22nd. It rescinds the suspension on collection on all other parking violations. Collection including interest will commence as of the date of the proclamation. It rescinds the proclamation section that allowed parking of self-contained recreational vehicles on residential streets, and it rescinded the closure of Affleck Park and City Creek Canyon to recreational uses. Obviously, and I appreciate, I appreciate Katie, you know, putting together that very succinct description of what those proclamations did, and I'd be happy to share that with, with you all. But obviously, this new information is going to inform, you know, how we move forward.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Let's move on to our next standing item, which is updates on relieving the condition of people experiencing homelessness. We had some, also two questions under there, but I'll just go ahead and open it up for Rachel, Mayor, and Lisa to talk us through these updates, and then we can come back to the questions if needed.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Before I do that, did you, I think that Lorna was prepared to give a quick update on windstorm emergency, if desired by the council.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, let's, yeah.
Don't forget all of our other emergencies.
Of course.
Hi, thank you, Council, for inviting me. Very quick update. We had an original goal of October 15th to remove debris from the streets in preparation for winter and fall weather. We are going to, to meet that goal. So we will be transitioning our streets crews away from 100% debris removal and back into some of their normal duties. They need to shift quickly into winter operations, getting ready for those. Utah National Guard has been released. We've been coordinating with the county and the state. They're going to shift to helping the county and the city, public utilities with clearing streams that have trees in them, again, to prevent flooding problems. We are going to be transitioning some public messaging around the remaining stumps that are in the right-of-way, and also sidewalk repairs, which engineering has commenced. We, so we have submitted the information to FEMA, as you're all aware, that is now moving up through the federal process. We have not heard any updates from that. The good news is that we had no significant injuries or accidents during this entire time, and that we are ahead of schedule on our goal, and we have a lot more work to do still with contracts and FEMA cost accounting and other things to dial this emergency in. But the first phase, the big heavy lift of removing debris on the street, has been accomplished as of the end of today.
That's great. Can we get, I'm, it might take a while, but can we get some numbers on what was the total, like, tonnage and number of trees and all that stuff?
Yes, we are updating all of that. We did a preliminary damage assessment sort of on the fly, and then we've been going back and refining everything, and so we should have some really solid numbers when this is all done. It continues to kind of get dialed in as we go, so yes, we'll be able to get you some good numbers.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions, councilmembers, for Director Vought? Okay. Lisa, Schaefer?
I just wanted to mention that today you will be hearing Budget Amendment 3, which includes some preliminary damage assessment numbers totaling almost $6 million related to the windstorm. I just wanted to make sure you all understood that that definitely is not the final tally, and these are preliminary numbers, like Lorna said, that will be coming in. Those are based on contractor estimates, and a lot of, we don't have invoices yet. So you will be seeing those numbers, and they will climb. I think the last time I updated you on this, we were talking around $11 million in damages as our initial assessment. I wouldn't be surprised if we hit that. So the $6 million ask today is, like I said, it's an estimate. Thank you, though. And thanks, Lorna, you're awesome. Team Lorna!
There you go. Okay, so now we'll go ahead and move on to the updates on relieving the condition of people experiencing homelessness.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of updates I wanted to share as we enter Week 2 of Phase 2 of the Community Commitment Program. This effort, as you know, is focused right now on the 700 South area, around the, the resource center there. There was a little confusion last week in the public comment period about how outreach is working there. So we're entering Week 2, as I just said, and there's three weeks of daily outreach efforts of persistent compassion, as I have called it to myself, and now to you, where we, the service providers are there every day, right? Interacting with people and trying to determine what services they would like, what they need, and where to fit them in with service providers. So the tally of people who have been, who, who the outreach providers have made contact with is at 88 right now. This isn't a constant number of people who are there constantly camping, but it is, you know, the, kind of the overall total of people who have kind of moved in and out of the area. Some people have moved out of the area, as providers have moved in, as is kind of typical, from what I understand, but, you know, there's, there's migration in and out. So 88 individuals so far. Placements have kicked up a bit, so we have total placements to nine people into services at this point. The providers are looking for more spaces and more options for couples. That's been a higher request right now, so that's a focus for providers. The St. Vincent de Paul overflow facility is set to open this Wednesday night, so that helps with some capacity issues. And you'll remember too, that you supported the funding of $160,000 in hotel vouchers, motel vouchers, which will be coming online here soon now too. So that's a, a big part of the, the overflow and the winter and emergency shelter needs for people that you are very familiar with. So all of these options coming together really helps provide some capacity for people who need it. So we choose off to a pretty good start. We'll have this week where, you know, again, we'll do daily contact, and then next week again, we'll be daily provider contact with people, and we're happy to keep you posted as we move further along. Any specific questions here? I think I might have addressed the, the space issue. There are, there are not always open beds at shelter facilities. They do run at, you know, well, you know, pretty close to capacity, but there are other options. So we have, last I heard, about 100 detox beds for people who need those services, and then St. Vincent's and motel vouchers hopefully also provide options for people who want them.
Okay, great, thank you. Don't see any. Let me make sure we got our pre-submitted questions answered. So the first one, I think, is, is it still the case that on October 23rd, the Health Department will begin to abate the encampment activity on 7th and South? And then does the administration feel confident in assuring the council that adequate notice is being given to these camping, to these encampments in advance of abatement activities? Are there examples where the notice could be shared with the council?
I can try to respond to that, Mr. Chair. So the last several weeks, the Health Department has really focused on smaller areas that are not largely inhabited by people at this point, for, for lots of reasons. It's still my understanding that the Health Department will do a bigger cleaning in the 700 South area on October 23rd, and that, that area will then be closed to camping. That is well-known, based on what the, what our staff is telling us right now. It's well-known in the area that that area will be closed on October 23rd. That notice started going out to people in the area last week, so there's no, no secret there. We have been working with the Health Department to try to stay on top of what their plans are for each week, as they are, you know, working on cleaning around areas where people are living. So happy to share that information with the council as I get it, and we're trying to, to be a little bit, to be, to get that in, a little bit more in advance. So the Health Department doesn't have a requirement to provide notice, but have been responsive to our requests to be, to make that notice more understandable and more clear and more, you know, a little bit more in advance of, of when those cleanings happen. So they do noticing, but there's not, it's not quite that same, you know, it's not at the level that we have, have been hoping to get to with them yet, but they have been responsive to our ask.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions on any of those follow-ups, councilmembers? Okay, great, thank you. We will move on then to Agenda Item Number 3, which is Updates on Racial Equity and Policing.
Mr. Chair, I believe that David Litback is on to address your specific budget questions that arose over this last week.
Okay.
If he's not, I'll wing it.
Or, or, Mr. Chair, we could also discuss it during the Budget Amendment 3 discussion. That's going to be later on the agenda. Oh, there's Stephen.
Yeah. But I'm also happy to discuss it, whether now's the time or during the budget, whatever you prefer.
We can, we can wait and discuss it all at once, so that you don't have to be on another call.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, and loop that in with, a little bit further down. So that brings us to Agenda Item Number 4, which is Police Officer Body-Worn Cameras. And with us for this, we have Jennifer Bruno from the council staff, Cindy Guss-Jensen from council staff, and Katie Lewis, City Attorney.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I'm filling in for Kirill Luke, had some family stuff come up today, and I'm hoping that Cindy will jump in here, because she has a much better handle on the issue than I do, but this, oh, hi, Cindy. You can go ahead, Cindy, sorry.
Oh, well, just, the council had, had a lot of feedback from constituents, some of which was asking, why, why would you spend money on video cameras, body worn cameras for officers? It's better to use the money for something else. But then we had other constituent feedback that said, it's essential that you have a record of this. And so really, when, when the council members weighed the feedback, it was, it was clear that there was a public interest in not only maintaining but expanding the use of cameras. And so the council did appropriate funds in the budget for that and for increased storage. Right now, the storage retention schedule is one year in some of the categories, but the statute of limitations is four years. And so hopefully, that either we could suggest that you put the change into the ordinance here, or you could just ask the administration to update that retention schedule. But, but the council's action with the budget enabled that additional record storage, so that's, that's one piece of it. And then the thinking behind this ordinance is that if there's such a significant investment in, in this, the body cam technology, and it is so important to the community, and it is used in, in court proceedings, in disciplinary proceedings, and that type of a thing, then it should be applied consistency, consistently, and applied in a, in a clear manner. So that's what this ordinance seeks to do, is to set a baseline for that information, or for that, the practice there, and largely, those things are usually administrative, but because this relates to a significant budget allocation and a significant public policy issue, that's, that's one of the main reasons why it can be in ordinance. That said, there were several places where we, in the staff report, referred questions that are sort of pending, suggested that we get the administrative feedback on it, because they are, they're, it is, it's not really purely a legislative thing at all. There's a large legislative component to that. And I'm having trouble pulling up that list of items that are in the staff report. Jennifer, do you have that right there?
Yes.
Can you? Okay, so the, the first one is the two-day versus five-day. In the original draft, what council staff recommended was two days that the, the police department provide the footage, the raw footage, to council members within two days of the incident. And the police department and the city administration suggested, and the city attorney's office suggested that perhaps five days would be better, because that would give the, the department the time to go through the footage and provide context. Part of the oversight concept was that, that you'd be getting the footage very early, so that it wasn't in, in any sort of context or framework. It was you just having access to it. And I want to remind everyone that this would be confidential access. The fact that the council has it from an oversight point of view, and the mayor, of course, has it from an oversight point of view, does not mean that it's more likely to be seen by the public. It doesn't mean that it is seen by the public, doesn't mean it comes, becomes public sooner. So if that isn't clear in the ordinance, we can get the attorney's office to, to add that. But anyway, I don't know if the administration is prepared now to address the two-day versus five-day. And one of the things we suggest is maybe we could say two business days, because it would, it would be a little much to try to do it over a weekend. So anyway, maybe the administration could address that, or maybe they would want to get back to us later about it.
We'd love to get back to you about it. I don't, we're prepared to, or I see Katie unmuting, but I don't think we were prepared to address that. Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just was wondering, since this is the council's first time considering this ordinance, if they would like an overview of what it says and where that two-business day falls in to the entire reporting and making the, the body cam republic context? And then, you know, there may be a sort of a list of questions that end up going back to the administration for further discussion.
Much better idea, that's great.
I might have run into the details. Would, would the, the council like me to just walk you through the draft ordinance and, and what it, what it says, so you can have that overarching context?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, absolutely. So the, the ordinance does a, a couple of things. The first thing that it does is define officer-involved critical. That is also defined under state law, but this definition includes- That is also defined under state law, but this definition includes an injury which has occurred due to a canine bite. The reason, of course, that that is important is for the, the Council to have a defined term of, I'm sorry, is there a lot of feedback?
A little bit. It's kind of crackly.
I think it's coming from Cindy, just if you, yeah, there you go.
Okay, sorry. I, I just, it's hard to know whether you can hear me. So officer-involved critical incident will include a bite by a canine. And what, the reason that's important is the ordinance then goes through a process of when the police department has to provide notice of that critical incident to the elected officials, and when that ordinance, or excuse me, when the, the body camera footage should be provided, must be provided to the elected official. So that's that two days and five days that Cindy was mentioning. So first of all, the definition of officer-involved critical incident, it's the same thing as state law, plus canine bites. I can't see you, so if you, if you want to interrupt me, please do. I'm, I'm just working through the ordinance as we talk. Oh, yes.
Cindy, now I'm trying to unmute and can't. If we could put a placeholder here and come back to it, but one of the issues that was raised, I believe, by the police department is that by, by categorizing the dog bites as an officer-involved critical incident, it triggers some state and other action that we may or may not want to trigger. So we probably need to circle back on that one to see if, if there's another way to get that information shared without accidentally triggering other things unless both the administration and Council feel like it's appropriate to trigger the other things. So just a placeholder note there. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
May I comment on that quickly?
Yes, go ahead.
Cindy, I thank you for putting a placeholder in that, because I would like to know the pros and cons of it triggering an OICI. So it may be for a different discussion. I know that we probably don't have the time to get into depth, nor necessarily would Chief Brown or administration or staff be ready for that, but I'm interested in what the cons are of it triggering an OICI.
Great. I, I know we've got some thoughts on that, and I'm sure the administration does too. So in our list of, of questions, we can certainly put that on there. So continuing down through the, what the, the draft ordinance does is it, first of all, sets the standard that all officers must wear a body-worn camera when on duty. You'll notice that the staff report flags that there may be some exceptions that the administration will want to add into that. For instance, officers that are in administrative roles, or other undercover, or other, other opportunities like that. So then, under Utah law, I'd like to direct the, the Council's attention that there is a Utah law that sets some standards for body-worn cameras, and that's Utah Code 77-7A. And in Section 104, so 77-7A 104, it goes through times when an officer must activate a body-worn camera and when the body-worn camera may be turned off. This ordinance mirrors that and uses the term "law enforcement encounter." So an officer shall activate a body-worn camera prior to any law enforcement encounter. Law enforcement encounters are everything from traffic stops to, you know, I can, I have to pull up the definition. I don't have it right in front of me, but it's, it's everything you would think of when an officer engages with a member of the community or has any sort of, you know, criminal enforcement, anything like that. So they have to activate their body-worn camera at that point. And then the, the next thing that state law says, but this ordinance builds upon, is when an officer can deactivate a body-worn camera. And the, what the ordinance says is that an officer may not deactivate the body-worn camera without first stating on the, on the camera recording the reason for deactivation. So that then creates that transparency and accountability, and that actually goes a step further than state law. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Any questions? Councilmember Rogers, go ahead.
I guess can we get a little bit more specific on like, what kind of reasons would the police officer turn off his body cam, his or her body cam?
Absolutely, Councilmember Rogers. That's a great question. And Utah Code 77-7A 104 goes through a list of when an officer may deactivate a body-worn camera. So the, this ordinance builds on state law by requiring an officer to state it on the record, on the recording. But the, the law actually says, gives reasons for why an officer could deactivate, and I'd be happy to read that to you if, if that's helpful for your, you to think about it. Okay. So the, the reasons that an officer can deactivate a body-worn camera are to, and this is state law, to consult with a supervisor or a newer officer during a significant period of inactivity, during a conversation with a sensitive victim of a crime, a witness of a crime, or an individual who wishes to report or discuss criminal activity. If the individual requests that the officer deactivate the body-worn camera, and the officer believes that the value of the information outweighs the potential benefit of the recording. The officer can also deactivate a body-worn camera during a conversation with a victim of a sexual offense. If the officer is conducting an evidence-based lethality assessment, the victim or officer believes that deactivating the body-worn camera or recording would encourage complete and accurate information sharing, or necessary to protect the safety or identity of the victim, and the officer's body-worn camera is reactivated as soon as reasonably possible. So those are the state law reasons that a law enforcement officer can deactivate a body-worn camera during a law enforcement encounter. Again, the ordinance adds an additional requirement that the officer has to state the reason on the recording so that anybody reviewing it later knows why it happened.
And Katie, this is Cindy. I think I want to ask the Council if they want to put an additional placeholder here. This comes from a conversation that Councilmember Fowler and I were having. It seems like at the end of incidents, it's inconsistent when things are, are maybe winding down, or when some officers are more involved than other officers. Some officers turn off their cameras, others do not. We don't know what, what the consistent requirement is for closing out. If they're going to be on the scene for two hours, does that mean they're there officially in a law enforcement encounter and ought to have their cameras on? Or does that fall into another category? So that's something I did not have an answer to, and wonder if that needs just further clarification, if it's of interest to the Council.
And if I can just expand on my concern with that, is that we oftentimes see things, I have seen in my experience, as my attorney experience, that there are potential misconduct. I'm certainly not saying that this is from Salt Lake City. It's just things that I've seen that have happened after, quote-unquote, "the incident," or people have left the scene and were transporting somebody to the jail, or, or things like that, and what that looked like. One of the ideas that Cindy and I talked about is that the body cam should not be deactivated until that person is outside of the custody of Salt Lake City, whatever that looks like, of a Salt Lake City officer. And so, again, something to explore a little bit in trying to minimize the, the lack of transparency in, in ways that we're not necessarily thinking about. Of course, we want it on the scene, but a lot happens outside of the scene. Is that, Cindy, from our conversations, that's sort of what I remember.
Yeah, yeah. One big thing was until the person is taken to custody, or into somebody else's custody, and then, which they probably already do, but we just don't know that. And then the other was the uniformity of what's the definition of when the scene is, when, when it's over.
Great. So I, I think that the, one question to ask the, the police department and the administration is how, how that deactivation process occurs at the end of a law enforcement encounter? I will also direct you to, again, that section of Utah Code 77-7A 104, Section Eight, which does say that when a body-worn camera has been activated, the officer may not deactivate that body-worn camera until the officer's direct participation in the law enforcement encounter is complete, subject to the exceptions that I just read you about interviewing victims and things like that. So there is the state law overlay of not deactivating until the direct participation in the law enforcement encounter is complete, but perhaps the Council and administration would like to talk about what that specifically needs, and if the ordinance needs an additional layer. Okay, any other questions, or I'll continue on with the outline of what the ordinance does?
Go ahead and continue, Cindy.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Was there a question? No, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So another aspect of the activation and deactivation concept is whether it would be possible to keep a record of instances when a body-worn camera is deactivated, and how that record would be audited or provided to the elected officials. I think that the staff report adds this also as a policy question and further conversation to have with the administration, because I believe that there are some programs that the body-worn camera company acts on, provides, that have the auditing and record-keeping capabilities for when body-worn cameras are deactivated or muted. So that, that may be a conversation or a, you know, a question to ask the administration and discuss from a budgetary perspective of whether it would be worth it to get that And I will continue on unless there's questions about that. Okay. So then the next, the next category of the ordinance addresses what Cindy was talking about, and Jennifer, the timeframe for when the body-worn camera is provided to the elected officials and then the public. So the ordinance sets forth a requirement that within 24 hours after the occurrence of an officer-involved critical incident, remember that definition is under state law, and then this ordinance has added, and use of a canine to provide, or to create bodily injury. So after 24 hours of that officer-involved critical incident, the chief of police is required to notify the city attorney, the council chair, the mayor, and the mayor's chief of staff of the facts of the incident. So within 24 hours, those people will be alerted to the facts of the incident. Then, within either five or two-business days, this is the question that Cindy brought up, after that incident, the mayor, city council members, and city attorney will be provided links through Secure File Share to all unedited body-worn camera footage from all the officers at the incident and the 911 calls related to the incident. So there is that question that was raised by Cindy of what is the appropriate timeframe, and the mayor mentioned that that would be a conversation for the administration to circle back with the Council, whether two-business days or five-business days works from an operational perspective. I'll continue unless there's questions. So then, of course, the Council may call for a closed session to be briefed on the legal and factual issues surrounding the officer-involved critical incident. The, the other two points to think about is that the police department and the city recorder will, for four years after the officer-involved critical incident, be required to notify the city attorney and mayor's office and council of a grandma request pertaining to that body-worn camera footage, and also be required to notify the city council and mayor's office, the, the city attorney will, of any claims received. So this is all part of providing information and a structure of notice regarding these officer-involved critical incidents. Now, you probably recall that for officer-involved critical incidents, the city has an executive order that requires the police department to make public the body-worn camera, camera recordings of officer-involved critical incidents. This ordinance now proposes to codify that ten-business-day release, so it's not just an executive order, it would be an ordinance. And it would be the same process that we do now with officer-involved critical incidents, where ten-business days after the incident, those recordings would be provided to the public and be classified as public. The ordinance does also clarify that there may be some images from a body-worn camera that might be offensive or violate an individual's privacy and should not be disclosed unless they're requested by the family of the individual involved with the encounter. So, and it gives examples of that. Images inside a private residence, medical and mental health care facilities, intimate images, images of minors, images showing the moment an individual deceases, or the individual's body the moment after deceasing, domestic violence and sexual assault victims or witnesses, and domestic violence or sexual assault facilities and shelters. So any recordings that depict those images, that, that portion of the image showing those would be redacted. So the ordinance codifies that concept of public and transparency, but also respects the privacy and the, the importance of some images not being made public as, as part of these law enforcement encounters. Are there any, any questions on that before I, I continue on? Okay. The, the next section of the ordinance talks about what should happen prior to releasing these images to the public. And this actually codifies the practice that our police chief currently engages in. Prior to the, the images being made public right now, Chief Brown meets with the family of the individual who was involved in the officer-involved critical incident and shows the video to them prior to it being made public. This also requires the chief to consult with an organization with expertise in trauma and grief on the best practices for creating an opportunity for those families to view the images. The concept there, of course, is extreme sensitivity to individuals seeing their loved ones in often, you know, very disturbing situations. That consultation with the trauma and grief organization would not need to happen prior to every officer-involved critical incident viewing, but it could be on an annual basis or, you know, whatever timeframe the Council felt was appropriate. The, the other section, having to do with releasing the body-worn camera footage, is that it specific, the ordinance specifically says that the footage will not be released to the public for any other purpose, other than to comply with this ordinance unless pursuant to a valid grandma request or for valid law enforcement purposes. One question that was asked in the Council Staff Report is if the administration could help the Council understand what valid law enforcement purposes mean, and, and how, how great or how small that exception is. So that's another question to add to your list for further discussion. Any questions on that before I continue?
Katie, if I could just clarify for the Council that that is also a direct counsel request, and it's based on some complaints that were received by Council members about the release of some footage about a particular incident that was tragic to the family. The police department and fire department were using it to illustrate a point or to, you know, re, sort of recognize the, the great work of their staff, but some people felt like it was not the right use of body cam footage, and, and we don't know how you'd articulate that, or whether it would fall under a law enforcement purpose or not. So we've left So we've left that there again. That would be a placeholder with the administration.
Great, thanks. So that's the entirety of the section about how body worn camera recordings for officer involved critical incidents are given to the elected officials and then made public and what is made public. The next section of the draft ordinance talks about audits. So to ensure that officers in the PD are complying with state law, city code, and police department policy, the ordinance requires the administrator of the civilian review board to randomly review at least five body worn camera recordings at least once a month and to provide a report of any findings of material noncompliance with state law, city code, or police department policy to be referred to the police chief and city attorney, the council chair, the mayor, and the mayor's chief of staff. The staff report did have a question of whether the civilian review board administrator with his current workload is the appropriate person to be doing those audits. And I think that's a question that could be discussed with the administration on where that audit function lies. But the concept is monthly random audits by somebody outside of the police department. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
It's not a question so much as a comment, but I had a really great meeting with some members of the civilian review board, I don't know, sometime prior to today. And one of, to that point, Katie, of whether or not that is the correct space for a monthly audit, one of the other considerations I think we need to look at is the fact that what we heard from the civilian review board members that were present in the meeting I attended is that we need several more staff to do all of the work that is being done by Rick at this point. And I know that every department is, you know, really stretching thin their resources. But as we are adding on quite a big, heavy lift that I think is an important lift, but certainly would take up time, whether or not we need to hire a new person or look at an outside agency for that audit, which recognizably comes with an amount of money. But we need to keep that in mind as well because I do think it is an important part of the ordinance. But that right now, the civilian review board executive director, and I don't know if that's his title, but we all know who I'm talking about. It's really working hard and diligently, but probably, I don't know how much we can, how much more we can stretch his bandwidth to include more of these responsibilities. So as we come back with whether or not that's the right agency for it, obviously, we need to look at whether or not we have the money to fund something like that.
And Councilmember Fowler, I would add to that that this may be a question also to ask the administration about the pricing of the auditing functions that Axon itself has. And that may or may not be a way to have the audits occur. Now, who reviews those and how they are provided to the elected officials or others may be another question, but certainly one that the administration could address.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Councilmember Dugan.
We talk audits as a plural. So are we talking two a month? Is there a need to put a number there, a minimum of two a month, a minimum of five a month? But how many audits are we looking at?
Councilmember Dugan, the ordinance currently contemplates a review of at least five random body worn camera recordings per month. So that could change or if that didn't seem sufficient or if it seemed too onerous, that could be also a discussion and a question to ask of the administration and to think about amongst yourselves.
Thank you. Katie, oh, sorry. Did any other council members have questions before I ask mine? Okay. Katie, I know you spoke about retention earlier and I know that like data storage can also be a big issue and can be very costly. Is there any idea of how much that's going to add? Or is it few enough of these videos that are officer involved that it's not going to be a significant budget change and to manage the data storage for that?
Councilmember Ward, I don't have an answer to that question, but it would be one that the police department may be able to answer. Or Jen, you were reaching in, like, I don't know if somebody from your office has also thought about those budgetary questions.
I can speak to that. During the annual budget, council staff asked what the data storage options and costs would be since the council was looking at adding additional body cameras. Ultimately, the $1.2 million the council approved, that's 1.2 million annually ongoing, ensures that every officer has a body camera, every officer has a taser, and there is unlimited data storage for the body camera footage. The department might have other footage storage needs such as interviews, but for the body camera footage, unlimited data storage was included in the package that the council funded.
And that doesn't address the policy of retention. That just addresses the capacity of retention. So someone needs to actively say that the policy needs to be changed, either administratively or legislatively.
Okay.
Great. There's one more section to the ordinance unless there's any other questions about the audit and retention piece. Okay, then the final section of the ordinance addresses use of body worn camera recordings after the recordings have occurred. So first of all, officers may not use personal recording cameras at any time while on duty. They may not use recordings from body worn cameras for personal use or upload them to public or social media websites. And they may not alter or edit any body worn camera footage without express permission from either the chief of police or the city attorney. So those are just final fail safes and sort of the rules of the road of what happens with those recordings once they occur and what the official recording devices are. And that is the ordinance as it's drafted now. I'm happy to answer any questions or I know Chief Brown and I think Rachel and others are here as well.
Anybody have any, Katie, can you go over the two-day, five-day issue again? Because I know that that was something that some media had questions about. Can you go over that one more time? Sorry.
Certainly. So this is in the context of an officer involved critical incident. So when one of those incidents occurs, the ordinance says that certain members of the city administration and elected officials will be notified verbally by the chief of police within 24 hours of the incident. And then the question is, when do the, all of the recordings and the 911 recordings, when are those share files, secure share files, provided to the elected officials and the city attorney? And the question is, two business days after the officer involved critical incident or five business days? Remember that you're in a 10-business-day window because at the 10th business day, that's when the recordings are provided to the public. So it's a question of, on day two business day, do the elected officials and the city attorney receive the unedited body worn camera recordings and 911 tapes? And they could be hours of tapes. So it's, you know, it's not necessarily a 10-minute share file that you'll be getting. Or is it five business days after the officer involved critical incident? So that's the policy question.
Right. Well, so just to, well, I'll open it up for council members to, now's your opportunity to give your input on that question, which to me is kind of the big question for this ordinance. So I'd like to hear from my colleagues how you feel about two business days versus 10.
I thought it's five.
Five.
So, I mean, I, if I may, I think we could sort of split the baby in some ways and say not less than two and not more than five. Because recognizing what Katie just said, there could be hours of video in one way or another from, I mean, if you think of the amount of police officers that may be involved and getting the video and making sure, again, this is an important ordinance and I appreciate everybody's hard work. I don't want to add extra work because we just don't have the bandwidth and the people power to necessarily do that. So for me, I feel like we could be flexible in that sort of range, not less than two, but not more than five, where we, the council receives that video. I mean, it may be a video that is simply one or two officers that could get to us within those two days. But I also don't want to be overly burdensome where then we're back here next year fighting about the fact that we didn't get body cam video because we didn't have the resources to get the body. That's not the intent here. It is to be a more transparent and communicative and collaborative relationship between the police department, the administration, and the council. At least that is my idea.
Well, that raises a question for me, Katie. What would be, I mean, the ordinance doesn't say what the violation would be. So if it was, you know, whatever, however many days we choose and it didn't get done by that day, what would be the penalty for that?
Council Chair Warden, all ordinances have the force of law. So violation of most city ordinances are misdemeanors. Whether or not, if the chief of police doesn't provide the body camera footage within five business days would rise to the level of charging a misdemeanor. I'm not going to speculate, but ordinances certainly have more teeth and have the force of law in a way that a policy does not.
Is Chief Brown available? Does the chief want to add anything to any information we might need to know as part of this discussion of the two days versus five days?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'm here. And thank you, council. That's a good question. That's a good question. And Councilmember Fowler, I liked your suggestion. Some incidents may only have one or two officers and within two business days, that footage can be collected and put together with the 911 and context could be given. Some, I mean, just if you look back and think about the State Street shooting that we had that went all the way down State Street, had probably 30, 40, 50 officers involved. And that's a lot of video to go through in five days. So we would do our best to get everything to you within that window of two to five. I don't want to go to jail, so I'm going to get it to you in five. I can promise you that.
I mean, my concern is when you give people a timeframe, it's five days. If you give them a window of two to five, it's really five. So if we're going to give the officers five days, if we're going to give the department, and this isn't just for PD, I mean, this is for anything. I personally think that I would rather, if we're going to try to do like a window or something like that, I would rather see it be two business days unless there's like some, I don't know how you would word this, Katie, but like unless the like volume of footage is like so, it's not practical to be provided within a amount of time. But I just, I still don't, my preference would still be towards the two business days. And if we end up having a bunch of problems with it, then we can amend it. But I would rather have a two days with an exception to have a window, personally.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question?
Yes, Cindy, go ahead.
Of the council, it partially, this depends on what your expectation is. And it sounds like we might be saying a couple of different things here on accident. I think that the police department is perceiving that you would like the footage plus context from them about the situation. I don't know from a technology point of view how difficult it is to pull out the footage from this time to this time for these officers. I don't know if that's a two-day process or a 30-minute process. But that might be what some council members are thinking of when they say two business days, just the technology of it. Whereas the police department in thinking five days is talking about putting the context to it as well. And the question that I think would be good for the council to let them know is, do you want to have that context or are you looking for raw footage?
I know for me personally, I'm just talking about the footage, but I'll let other council members speak to that. Councilmember Rogers?
I want context. I want the context of the police department behind it.
Councilmember Dugan?
I would say the same thing because if you're going to have a bunch of camera videos that really has nothing to do with it, it's just a guy standing there watching some things, you're going to spend a lot of hours there. And then if I get it in two days, is the expectation that I'm going to, we're going to have a discussion on day three? Or do I have like five days for us to have a discussion? Because we could be putting a big burden on the police department to get us in two days and we don't do anything with it for another seven days. So why did we tell them to give us it in two? So if we give them time to do it, give us a little context, and I get it in four business days and now I can only have to read or look at four hours or something, it's much more manageable for my end and I'm not putting too much burden on the police department. And then I can look at it quickly and I know I have a deadline to be able to look at it and discuss it the next day or two days. So that's my concern of having it so tight of a bandwidth that we're going to really overburden the police department and they're going to fail on it and then we're going to be mad that they can't produce it in two days. Or are they going to give us a unprofessional package that really takes forever to disseminate and digest?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Mono?
I guess I'm just trying to think through the plausible scenarios as to why two days versus five would even make a difference. I guess in the really sort of egregious situation where we need to schedule a closed session to discuss something and that needs, and there's some reason, some strategy or some reason why we want to do that before the footage is released to the public. It seems like the five days potentially could, I mean, even with two days, we might not, we might be on an off week and so we might not have a scheduled meeting. But it seems like it would give us a little bit more time to schedule a meeting and get a discussion where we can have that with the legal noticing requirement. So I guess if it's just raw footage and the technology seems easy enough in the two days, it seems, I mean, if that's reasonable with technology, then I say we go with that just to give us that extra few days in that situation that we hope never happens. We hope we never have to do that.
Katie, if we, if the department is required to provide just the raw footage in two days, If they're, if the department is required to provide just the raw footage in two days, would that in any way limit council members' ability to, if they wanted to wait and view it with a police officer with context in five or six days or whenever, between the two days and the 10 days that it goes public, couldn't they have that option?
Council Chair Warden certainly would have that option, provided that, you know, they, they wanted to meet with the chief and the chief was available, which I'm sure he would be. I, I think the, the question is where, exactly what Cindy said, what is the value of the footage at two days? If it, if really what a council member wants is on day seven to meet with the chief and watch the, or have context provided. On the other hand, if it's worth it to have it ahead of time for sort of absorbing it prior to having media or public comments, there's that as well. But absolutely, they can always meet with the, the chief and receive context or have a closed session.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief Brown, are you still here? Somewhere?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, I couldn't see you on the street. Can I ask a, just a real practical matter? Can you walk us through the process of? I mean. And, and take this with a great insult because I don't do technology. I don't at all. Like I can't even figure out my, my. Mostly, but it's, I imagine a police officer is involved in an incident. He comes back to the station. He or she downloads their camera footage. It's somewhere and that's put into a file. I mean, is it that quick of a thing? Or is there more of a process that I'm missing here? Maybe that would help in understanding that the two versus five days simply, I mean, it's one thing to go through it all. It's, and the idea of the raw footage. Can you walk me through that process a little bit? Like the technical, practical process?
Yeah, that's a good question, council member. After there's an OICI incident, the officers are brought back to the Public Safety Building here. After, after the, the OIC team actually responds to the scene. So it's, it's usually either a West Valley or Unified Team officers made up on those different, those agencies go to the scene, conduct some investigations there, and then they'll meet us back up here. And then they'll, they'll go through and they call it processing, but they go through and process all the witness officers. And they go through and process the, the involved officers. And then at the end, they take the camera and we download that. Sometimes it can take anywhere, it can take anywhere from four to six hours to go through that process and to get that, that camera downloaded. So once we get everything downloaded from the involved officers and the witness officers, I'd say it's probably around eight hours maybe. And it's within that 24 hours, I think, by the statute or this ordinance that we would, we would make notification, notification to the council and to the mayor and to, and to the, the chief of staff of, of these incidents, or the council chair, I'm sorry, and the city attorney. So it takes. Huge time. It's not as easy as just flipping a switch. It does take a little bit of time. So it, it might be four to six, eight hours on big ones to get all that, that video amassed and put together. And then to go through and pick it out and then put it into a file share that we can share with you might take another four or five hours by the staff to do that, depending on how many officers are involved. But then you have to go grab the 911 downloads and things like that. That's the context that kind of goes to, to what some of you are speaking about, kind of completes the, the picture of what's happening at, at that time.
Okay, thank you.
So Katie, can I ask one other follow-up question? So if we're saying that it's our, if the council chooses five days instead of two because we want to have context, do we have to put into the ordinance that we're choosing to have five days because we want context? Or what if we just, what if we set it at five and then we get it without context? Which is the whole reason. The whole reason that we're asking for additional time.
Council Chair Warden, I don't know if this fully addresses your question, but the ordinance now says that after receiving the footage, the council chair, or excuse me, the, the council can schedule a closed meeting to be briefed on the officer-involved critical incident, which of course is that opportunity for context and for the, the, the discussion and review in a group setting. We could strengthen that language and say that the reason for the five business days is to receive context and for the council members to have the opportunity to ask questions of the chief. If that would, would help provide some, some reason and some structure for the reason the five days was selected.
Well, okay. So. With that information, I would say that. For me, it, it makes more sense to have the two day requirement because then it gives time between, more time between that two days and the 10 days that it has to be released for us to call and schedule a meeting. And it gives the option for people, if they would rather not view it within two business days, to have more time to view it with an officer. So I think that the two days maximizes the options that were, that everybody that I've here, that all of the comments that I've heard, whereas five days diminishes those options. So, but if, if there's any more other, any other discussion item to this, then, I mean, we need to give, we need to give direction to which, what number we want to go with. So, Councilmember Rogers?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't think we need a straw poll, but if you do, I would make a straw poll that we move forward with five days.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I was waiting for a second and then I remembered we were just doing a straw poll. So I'll go ahead and ask for a straw poll. Sorry about that. Everybody that is in favor of do it, of having it be five business days, did you mean business days, Councilmember Rogers, or five calendar days? Okay, Councilmember Rogers is suggesting five business days. All in favor, go ahead and give your thumbs up.
Let me discuss real quick though. Sorry. I know we've been discussing it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just haven't heard a reason why not, why two days is on risk. Because I think what Chief said in response to Councilmember Fowler's question, it seemed like that all happens reasonably within two days. So I can't figure out why. Why the extra three days is helpful? I just want to understand why, why the straw polls are five days.
For me personally, I kind of heard what our city attorney said, and then I heard what Councilmember Dugan said. I feel like the chief has said the same thing. I just think that in order for us to understand the entire aspect of what's transpiring, we've got to have context. And that context is going to be given in a greater period of time than two days. There's no way, if you're looking at it in my opinion, that we can get the context behind something, let's say a dog bite or a shooting, within two days to have that, the attorney's legal jargon along with that, along with everything else that might be entitled with that context. So for me, that's why five days, if they think that they can get it done in five days, it would be hurt plan. It's not, we won't be going after our own city over misdemeanors because they're not getting it done in two days. So I, I'm all for five.
Counsel, excuse me, Mayor Mendenhall?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I also want to reiterate what Chief brought up that, you know, there are endless scenarios of critical incidents that involve hopefully never one officer, but at least two, up to dozens and dozens of officers. There can be, and there has been, times when there are, there is an incredible amount of footage. And I think. I mean, there's, no one is going to be dragging their feet to get this to you in five days. But I just, I think that a two day window is, doesn't recognize that sometimes, unfortunately, there are massive critical incidents in the city and we, we may not be able to fulfill on certain circumstances in a two day window what we could in five days. And just to the point about context, like we, we know this from incidents this year that even up until the district attorney completes an investigation, we don't have the context. So we can talk about the names of the officers in closed session or, you know, there's, there are minimal details we can get, but to really talk about this as actual context to the situation is an overstatement.
Councilmember Fowler?
Excuse me. Again, this is in one way, I proposed a, a window. I recognize that if most people are procrastinators like me, it probably is like the fourth day and 59th minute and second, right before I get something done. But I look at this also from a budgetary concern. We are doing an audit on the police department. We're doing a zero-based budget practice and exercise on it. And I don't know what that is going to look like in the future, but we do know that there are several of us that have a priority of looking at where we're putting our money. And again, this is no offense to anyone in the room, but we are looking at what our priorities are as we're continuing to look at community-based policing and how, what I've heard from police officers, what I've heard from the community, is that we continue to put more and more and more responsibilities on our police officers. And then that takes away from the other things that we also want them to do, like the pickup basketball games, right? And it's sort of the analogy that's been thrown around throughout all of these discussions with our, our audit with the police department and what we're doing. So for me, as a budgetary concern, what happens if we put this two day requirement on, we change the budget for the police department, they don't have the staff, now it falls on police officers in one way or another to get it to us. And we're not seeing the community policing that we're, that we're hoping for and, and having a police audit. And then we are now wondering if this two days even has any teeth to it because are we going to be pressing, having misdemeanor charges against our police department? And, and so like, that's my sort of logical play out of the, the budgetary concerns of it. Or do then, we get the other option is then we have an amendment, a budget amendment saying, hey, council, you put this requirement on us. And if you look at the rest of the ordinance that I brought up earlier, the, the audit for, which all of it I agree with. I, I'm not, I'm, I know this feels like I'm going a 180 from what people normally hear from me when we're talking about police, but all of this I agree with. There is the reality of the money behind it and the resources to do it. And so for me, we're putting on an audit with the civilian review board. We're putting on this other requirement of a quick turnaround, which I, I want the quick turnaround as quick as possible. How does that constrain our budget? Then the other logical outcome is then we get a budget amendment request. And in a political sense, then we look like we're giving the police more money. And it's like, wait, that's, that, that was not the way that this was intended. We're intended to get the information so that we have the information in a quick and timely manner. Also while being able to reimagine what our police force looks like while we're looking at a budget. So all of those things are sort of playing in, in my mind. I, I don't know that I would necessarily be ready to say today if it, if two days or five days is the right answer because of all of those other questions that I have regarding the budget and regarding any sort of, what kind of staff time this takes? How, what, what, what those kind of maybe not considered consequences are right now that I'm, that are popping up in my head?
Councilmember Dugan?
Can we compromise and go four days?
I appreciate the spirit of your question, but the, the straw poll that's before you is five days, so we want to speak to that.
Can I make a friendly amendment to the straw poll?
Sure.
Could we say something in the ordinance that, and Council Chair, I realize you don't necessarily agree with the window, but that we say something that is as soon as practicable, but not to exceed five days?
It looks like that's favorable from the person who asked for the original straw poll. So yes, I'll consider that a friendly amendment. Does anyone want to speak to the friendly amendment? Okay. Then I, does everyone understand what the, what it is now that we're asking the city attorney to have the ordinance say? Well, I guess we should ask Katie, is there, do you have any legal concerns with that, putting that in? Katie?
I do not.
Okay. So the straw poll now is to have the ordinance say as soon as practicable, but not less than five days, five business days after the, the date of the incident?
Not more than five days.
Yeah, sorry, not more than five days. Okay. All in favor, go ahead and show your support. Okay, that's unanimous. So Katie, do you have the information you need from us?
I do on that issue. I think there's still some outstanding questions on the ordinance that may require some follow-up conversations.
Okay. What, what further direction? Do you mean today or later?
No, that it was the various questions that, that we flagged as we went through. They're also raised in the staff report that may require the administration to bring some more information back to you.
Okay. And does anybody want to make any additional? Straw polls on those items? Or do we want to? Give more time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I think that they're, they're basic enough items that it really would just help to have the administration's feedback on them. And, and if we could do that, and then it may be that there's a simple suggestion that they have that could be put into draft language for you. I think that all of this can be done fairly quickly. I don't think that we're talking about a delay of months or anything like that. It, it just is a matter of us coordinating with the administration, giving them time to evaluate the various options that they would come up with. And then we would get back to probably with another briefing just on those items, unless they're so simple that it's something we can put in a memo to you. So unless the administration feels like I've oversimplified, that, that's my thought.
Okay. And it looks like we just now have Councilmember Valdemaros joining us. And Councilmember Valdemaros, we just are concluding the discussion about the officer wore body camera footage. We've already taken a straw poll, but do you want to give any input on this? So I, okay.
Thank you. I heard you. My, my computer just died, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well then, thank you very much, Mayor and City, or excuse me, City Attorney Katie Lewis. And thank you, Chief, if you're still here for giving us that information. We will go ahead and move on. We will go ahead and move on to agenda item number five, which is the budget amendment number three for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And for, with us for that, we've got Ben Lutke from the council office, Mary Beth Thompson, chief financial officer and sworn by city budget director.
This is the first briefing for the third budget amendment of fiscal year 21. The council has a public hearing scheduled for October 20th, next Tuesday. The council is also scheduled to take potential action next Tuesday because some of the items are time-sensitive in the amendment. There are three items requested by the administration and three council-added items. The total new expenditures, if all items are approved, is $52 million. Most of this is related to the airport. $6 million of this would come from fund balance. And Amanda, could you put up the revenues table on page one of the staff report? I'm going to turn the time over to Mary Beth to give an update on revenues and then an update on fund balance, which will be the table on page two when we get there.
Good afternoon, council. As you can see, we have projected a deficit for revenues. Most of this pertains to parking, justice courts, parking collections at the meters, special events. All of it's related to COVID. This is projected out through the end of the year. Do you have any questions on these deficits? Or do you, would you like more detail on the deficits?
Councilmembers, any questions on the deficits from parking? I don't see any question. Oh, Councilmember Rogers.
We're going to have an update on this. And I don't know if it would be appropriate at this time, but to hear a little bit about the CARES funding, is that going to be something that's going to be used to help backflow into this?
CARES funding cannot be used to offset revenues, only for additional expenditures. So we can't use any CARES funding to offset revenue deficits.
So our only availability is general fund, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep. I wish I didn't have to say that, just so you know.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Valdemoros.
So Mary Beth, on the, so on the fiscal year 2020, so the first column that we have, that's, that was our projection based on the fiscal year before. Then on the second column, we revised it, and now this is a deficit.
That's correct.
Okay. And did, did, do you feel like this is something that, that we were expecting or should have expected? Or is this way more than what you thought?
I, you know, things were changing so fast from we presented the budget to the council and the council adopted the budget. I don't know, it's something that we expected because we just didn't know, right? I, I couldn't expect that we were going to not do citations through September 22nd, right? I couldn't expect that we were not going to do parking meters through, you know, September. It's so, it's so fast in moving that it's hard for us to predict. I always tell people, they're like, so what about this? I'm like, if I had a crystal ball, I'd be making a lot of money because, and it's hard, right? It's hard to know this, but this, these are good projections. I wish I didn't have to come back with a $2.5 million deficit because it is, it doesn't make me happy, but it's the reality of where we live right now.
Right. And, you know, early, early in March, we had a, the super habit or whatever you call it in English. So we have a deficit, the opposite, we had an excess, I remember about $13 million. Have we used all of that?
In fund balance. So we'll talk fund balance next and, and talk through that. And we are getting, yes, yeah, it's, doesn't look nice, is what I would say. It doesn't look pretty. Does anybody else have any questions on the revenue side?
Councilmember Dugan.
So thank you. Is this forecast, is this based on revenue all the way through September?
It's based on revenue through the end of the year. We project out till the end of the year.
And was it a conservative projection out to the end of the year or was it a?
I would say it's, it's, it's middle. I wouldn't say it's optimistic and I wouldn't say it's extremely pessimistic. I would say it's middle. You know, we, as of September 22nd, we have started doing collections again, started issuing citations again, but things are going to be slow. And we've done some projections on, you know, the issuing of citations and it being slow because we don't have a lot of downtown traffic right now, right? So people aren't going to be paying at the meters as much. They're not going to be receiving citations as much. So I would say it's middle, is what I would say.
So this is projections out to the year, middle road. But actuals, where are we on the actuals? Do we have actuals go through the end of September or where are our actuals?
I don't have those here. I can provide those for you. What I will tell you is that you'll, you can see actuals for the majority of the license permits, the intergovernmental, the interest, fines and forfeitures, parking meters, charges and services, property tax, sales tax, franchise tax. We accrue both August, July and August back to last fiscal year. So you won't see anything except for September in property tax, sales tax and franchise tax because those are accrued back to last fiscal year.
Okay, so the stuff below the total taxes is you have a pretty good actuals through the current fiscal year from the licensing down to interfund reimbursement and transfers.
We do.
And do our actuals meet what our forecast was?
No, they don't.
They're, they're off by a lot too.
Correct.
Okay.
That's how we, that's how we project out. And what, what I suspect is a lot of this will sit in the first quarter and then we'll start seeing those revenues coming in now that we are allowed to do collections, issue citations, parking meters, right?
Right. And so that's why you're thinking that it's middle of the road as far as whether conservative or rosy picture.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Rana.
I just had a question on the tax revenue line items. Those look to be exactly what the, they don't seem to be changed at all. Do we have any additional data about those, particularly the sales and use taxes? Are they really coming in as, as projected or what is that?
Sales and use tax, we just received the September. So like I said before, July and August accrue back to last year. So those don't count in fiscal year 2021, those count in fiscal year 20. We received the sales tax for September, which is actually for July. So we received it in September, it's for July. And actually it was above, it was above budget.
Great.
For that one month. But I don't want to project that every month is going to be above budget because the deciding factor really is December. December is our key on how sales tax are going to play out. So I would like to say, stay as conservative as possible and leave it at budget before I project any surplus there. Property tax, we don't receive property tax until November and December. Most of that's booked in January, so we should have a good idea in January where property tax sits then.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mary Beth, you educated us as always. So the December numbers don't come out until March, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
End of February, first of March is when we'll usually have those.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. So Mary Beth or Ben, do you want to move on?
Yeah, we can move on to fund balance.
Okay.
That's the next page down in the staff report. So like we have done in the past, we have broken out funding our future general fund and then the total. As you know, it's all general fund, fund balance. But we want to show you what the fund balances look like. This fund balance is just rolling over what we had in 2020 and moving it to 2021. So note that when we complete our financials or what we call the CAFR, this fund balance number, beginning fund balance number can change because we have many different things that go into that number and that number can change. Usually in the past, that number has gone up, has not gone down, but I can't tell you what it's going to do this year. I suspect it will go up. Usually we give about $2 million back in expenditures and revenues also. And revenues came in better in fiscal year 20. So we know that the revenue portion will add something to the fund balance in the beginning fund balance number. And we can usually give that to you mid-December is usually when that number will come out. So that will change these numbers significantly. So as you see, the beginning fund balance for fiscal year 2021 is 13.25. And then we've taken the expenditures for budget amendment number two and taken the expenditures for the budget amendment that you have currently. And then I've also put in the revenue shortfall. We've added back the $5.9 million. That was the unspent COVID funds because we know that that's going to drop to fund balance because it wasn't spent. And we've also added back the rent assistant reimbursement of 1.1 that came from the COVID funding in budget amendment number two, leaving your total fund balance at 12.59%.
Mr. Chair, I noticed the mayor has her hand raised.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead, Mayor Mendel.
Sorry, that was from the last agenda item and I didn't know it was still raised.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Anyone else have your hand up right now? I'm scrolling through, trying to see, and it doesn't look like it. Okay, go ahead, Mary Beth.
That's all I have. So that will be your fund balance after this budget amendment. And like I said, come December, we will have, and once the CAFR is completed, we will have updated beginning fund balance numbers.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions, councilmembers? Anything else you want to add, Ben?
Just one thing. A significant amount of this budget amendment are expenses in response to the September 8th windstorm. And it's possible FEMA reimbursed the city for some of those expenses, which would then be available to go back to fund balance. But there's no timeline and there's no guarantee for when that might happen. So we're, we're sitting at the projected 12.6% fund balance, which is a little over $1 million below the target 13%. But in all the council's conversations, a windstorm is exactly when you would want to use fund balance.
And what I can say is that we are working both with FEMA and our insurance for numbers to get reimbursed. FEMA, the, the last FEMA reimbursement we received, it took 18 to 24 months to receive the reimbursement. So I wouldn't guarantee anything in this current fiscal year because it took 18 to 24 months and the last time we did this, when we had the tornado. But the insurance, we are working with them and hopefully should have some numbers in the next couple of months for insurance purposes.
Okay, oh, Councilmember Dugan.
And is that just one check from FEMA? They don't break it up and give you half of the first day and just once?
Yeah.
Okay.
Amanda, can you go to the next page for the impact fees table? This is an update on the four general fund impact fees. As you can see, fire in parks, the next expiration date is more than a year away, which is great. Police is expiring a little over $1,400 later this month. And each month, the rest of the year, a little bit more will be expiring. There's a policy question if the council would like to check on the status and timeline to update the police section of the impact fees plan. The council did just update the transportation section of the impact fee plan at the October 6th meeting. So that makes it easier for the city to spend impact fees, especially with the streets reconstruction bond money, so the two funding sources can work together.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Valdemoros.
Ben, so what can the, the impact fees from the police, so $194,000, $125,000 be used for? Can you remind me, please?
The impact fees can only be spent on what is in the city's impact fee plan as eligible expenses. The current plan lists a new Eastside Police Precinct. I think it actually says a Sugar House Police Precinct, but there was a little flexibility. So an Eastside Police Precinct is the only eligible item currently. So until the plan is updated, there is no other way to spend those police impact fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Dugan.
On the fire in the parks, do we have a plan to spend that money? Is there, is there, are they making a plan to spend that $6 million?
Parks have been the easiest to spend because new parks and new park amenities are often 100% eligible. On the other categories, the eligible expenses are often partially eligible. So you have to find matching funds such as general fund dollars, which makes it a little more complicated to spend. So parks are pretty easy to spend. A recent example would be the acquisition of Allen Park. That was mostly parks impact fees. On fire, the city has a system set up where the bonds that were taken out to build the Fire Station 3 in Forestdale Golf Course and I believe Fire Station 14, both of those are receiving partial payments on the bond debt using fire impact fees. So there's a 20-year bond that is being partially paid off by those fire impact fees for that.
Okay, I don't see any questions.
Okay, Amanda, you can take down the staff report. Thank you. So we have three administration requested items and three council-added items. Item A1, this is a request from the airport, $10.7 million to amend their operating budget and $28 million to amend the capital budget. This is partially to implement a hard stand operation due to the rephasing of the airport redevelopment program. The sudden drop in passengers due to the pandemic created an opportunity for the airports to abandon some of the older facilities faster than originally expected. And it would be done on October 27th. This is one of the time-sensitive items in the budget amendment. The airport would move to operate out of two new concourses. This would have a significant operating cost savings for the airport. And it's a one-to-two-year ahead-of-schedule change. This would involve taking buses for passengers to be boarded into the aircraft directly from the ground and vice versa for passengers arriving and exiting the airplane down to the bus. The capital budget includes a request to provide some flexibility for future changes in scopes of work. And there are two policy questions. One is what are examples of these additional scopes of work changes that the flexibility would help address? And the second is how would passenger comfort be addressed? And especially during inclement weather, if they're out going from buses to the ground to an aircraft? And how long the hard stand might be needed? We have Bill Wyatt, the airport director, and Brian We have Bill Wyatt, the Airport Director, and Brian Butler, the Airport Finance Director, if the council has questions on this item.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question. But can I just say, hi, Bill. Hi, Brian.
Hey, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. Just listening to the pile driver right outside my office.
Are there any questions for Bill Wyatt? Councilmember Dugan?
Just a quick, how, how often would you be needing the hard stands to load and unload passengers?
So it really depends, frankly, on volume and activity, airline activity. We are doing this largely to create flexibility so that over the period of the next three years, which is how long this will be in service, if volume grows faster than anticipated, we can handle the passenger flow. Because of course, we're getting rid of all of the, the old gates immediately, or on the 27th. And that was the idea here. These, this is by no means an ideal passenger experience, but it will help us survive the ups and downs of the industry over the course of the next few years. Most, you know, most of the forecasts that you see suggest that it's going to take the industry three to four years to return to what we would all consider normal. But this will be a, used primarily by smaller aircraft, so Embraer 175 CRJs, not, not the big planes. And we're seeing more of those at the moment. It's a bit difficult to forecast, but I will say we are doing better than most other airports in the country at the moment, which I think owes to our position as a Delta hub because they have stopped flying a lot of their transcontinental flights. So if you're in LA and, you know, you want to go to Charlotte, North Carolina, you probably won't stop here in Salt Lake. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian and for Bill Wyatt? Okay.
That takes us to A2, a request for $5.9 million from Fund Balance for responses to the September 8th windstorm. And there are six or seven line items that add up to that. It's 184,000 for tipping fees at the landfill, $893,000 for stump removal, $1.3 million for parks and cemetery cleanup, one point, almost 1.9 million for right-of-way debris cleanup, $324,000 to contract with arborists, $250,000 for an archaeologist that would work at the cemetery, and a little over $1 million for outside agency assist. There were several cities that came to assist with the response effort, as well as the Utah Department of Transportation and the National Guard. And all of these costs are estimates. The actuals are not going to be known until the vendors are selected and confirm the prices. There are four policy questions for the council to consider, although I think Mary Beth addressed the insurance question. The other three are if some of the 893,000 for stump removal, if it's urgent, or if some of it could be fit into regular workloads of city employees to be addressed over time, which would leave more funding in fund balance to address other city needs. What damage to private plots at the city cemetery is the responsibility of the city to repair or private owners? And the last policy question would be if the council wants to hear details about what an archaeologist would do at the cemetery and if their results would be publicly available afterwards.
Any questions related to that? I guess I do. I'm, I'm, if there were, was an archaeologist that were to repair something, I mean, that, that would have to be made public, wouldn't it? Is this just additional funding to, to provide that information? I'm confused about that.
Counsel, this is Lorna Vogt. I can speak to the archaeologist question.
Thank you.
In order to qualify for FEMA funding, because an archaeology, a cemetery is considered historic, our cemetery is, FEMA requires very specific protocols. One of those is an archaeologist prepares an initial summary survey of the existing damage and the headstones, et cetera. And then when the actual removal of stumps and trees and restoration work happens, the archaeologist is there to catalog and document any, you know, everything from human remains to artifacts, historical artifacts, and to ensure that those are handled correctly and any documentation that needs to go forward from there to restore those sites is available. The cemetery is, of course, a very important location and it's very old. And so we very strongly want, agree with FEMA's recommendations and would like to follow them.
Okay, thank you. I mean, and I imagine, Lorna, that if we didn't want to do this expense now, that it would just add to the expenses that are already sort of, that we're anticipating through the cemetery master plan.
Right. I mean, the cemetery, one challenge is it has to remain closed for much of this work. And just due to the sensitive nature of the cemetery and wanting to be just sensitive to the people who have headstones, family members there, we really want to put a priority on this work. It will take a long time to do it the right way, which is the challenge. And so we don't want to let, wait very late to start the work. And so SHPO, the State Historical Society, and FEMA have been very helpful in giving us some really good guidance on how to do this work correctly. And we would like to follow that.
Okay.
And I have some information on the other policy questions, if anyone's interested in that.
Sure, if you want to take us through those, that'd be great.
Okay. The urgency of stump removal, we put some very high costs on stump removal. Again, in order to meet FEMA reimbursement, we really do need to follow their procedures. And I'll just tell you, it's, it's extensive documentation of the size of the stump, the location of the stump, how much of the stump is out of the ground. And we didn't know how, how many we had initially. But the compliance division has gone out and documented every single stump in the right-of-way and measured it so that we can maximize that reimbursement if it's possible. The challenge with FEMA reimbursement is the best way to do is to hire a contractor. And then you are committed to spending that money regardless if you get the reimbursement down the road. Whereas our natural inclination is to go out and take care of the problem. But our labor is not covered by a FEMA reimbursement. So on the stump removal, yes, we believe some of it's emergency work because those are hazardous stumps in the right-of-way. In many cases, they've torn up sections of sidewalk, so they have to be removed to repair the sidewalks. Also, because they're in the right, right there on the curb, there will be problems with snow removal and runoff into the gutters that will be a stormwater quality issue. Our teams already have started removing stumps, so the number has gone way down. So I'm optimistic we won't have that high a number for stump removal. And then the ones that are smaller, we'll have to grind out because we, we don't have reimbursement for those. So it's kind of a mix, but we do feel that it's something we really need to get on top of. The parks and semit, the parks stumps are a little bit different story. They can wait a little bit longer.
Okay.
The private plots, the cemetery, the headstone, yes, those are the responsibility of the owner of that plot. But as far as the ground itself and the landscaping, the sodding, that's something the cemetery would want to take care of to make sure there's consistency and it's done correctly. So we don't have, you know, sinkholes and things like that happening. The insurance coverage, Ben addressed, and I think the archaeologist. I would just say that we've put these estimates in place with our, our best guesses from existing contracts and assumptions on our costs that we apply to the sister cities that helped us. Since we prepared this, we have found that only two of our sister cities have invoiced us for work. And that's thanks in large part to the mutual aid agreement that is in place with the expectation that we're going to turn right around and help them in time. Now, they may still submit invoices. We did invite them to do that, but so far only two have. And then we found out that the state of Utah is going to cover the National Guard and Utah Department of Transportation costs. And that includes the tipping fees because they took care of the material themselves. So that's a huge benefit to us. So those two line items should go down. I would say that the in-house costs from public services, waste and recycling, engineering, and others who are participating are not included in this. This is primarily for debris removal. We wanted to make sure that the contractors that we had to hire would be paid. And we're still doing a lot of work in-house to see the kinds of cost savings we have, like in streets, because we didn't do some of our street work, we saved money. And then the cost of the opportunity lost in parks and in streets to do some of the work that we should have been doing. So there's still a lot of pieces, moving pieces happening right now. And it's been a, a challenge trying to get all the contracts in place. We still don't have all of those. And come up with the best estimates we have and documentation through FEMA, looking forward to hopefully an eventual application, presidential declaration, and then eventually, public assistance, as Mary Beth said, way down the road.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, just a couple of follow-up questions in regards to the trees in the parking strip. When they fall and mess up the concrete, whose responsibility is that to fix the sidewalk?
That's when Ben's going around for a bit. We feel that that's the city responsibility because the only method we have right now for concrete replacement is the 50/50 program. And it's not a very equitable program in that you have to be able to afford to do those panels. In this case, the tree tore up the panel entirely and it's left a gaping hole in the sidewalk, making it impassable. So we feel that is a city expense to restore that sidewalk.
Okay. And then one other question I've got, what's in regards to the cemetery on the plot owners having to cover their costs of the headstones? I think that's, I mean, we maintain the trees, right? We take care of them up there. I don't really think that that's fair to do that to the private plot owners on that. That's just, you know, my opinion on that for the policy discussion.
And you know, that's, the council member, that's a question that came up with us as well. And that's, I think that can be left for a future discussion, decision. With the cemetery having been closed, that's our initial thought. And that's typically how it's been done, that the plot owner manages the headstone. But of course, there are many headstones that no longer have owners and family members to take care of them. So we'll still have to come up with a way of restoring those.
Thank you, Lorna. Any other questions before we move on to item A3? Okay.
A3 is a request for just under $260,000 from Fund Balance for operating costs of the Racial Equity and Precing Commission. The total cost is estimated at $360,000. The council put $100,000 in a holding account for this purpose back in the annual budget adoption. The remaining $260,000 would come from Fund Balance. There are three costs that add up to the 360,000 total. First is $219,000 for facilitators of the commission. And I understand the facilitators have been selected. The second cost is $85,000 for public engagement. And this is expected to include polling and citywide mailers. The third cost is $56,000 to provide stipends to the commission members. And there are different recommended stipends for the core commission members, the regular commission members, and the youth subcommittee members. There's one policy question about ongoing versus one-time costs. This item was listed as ongoing in the budget amendment. Typically, consultants are listed as a one-time cost. If they're needed over multiple fiscal years, the question comes up, do we need additional city employees to address that ongoing workload? But in the case of the commission, having those outside facilitators provides additional independence for the commission. And so the question is if the council sees one-time versus ongoing as more reasonable, or it could be addressed at a future date. But we wanted to raise the policy question to staff.
Anyone want to explore that question or Councilmember Ramon? Go ahead.
You know, I just had a question on, we talked about these costs last week with the cost for the facilitator. And I was just hoping that we could get a little more information as to what that facilitator is doing. I don't, I, I understand that it's important and I want to fund it, but I, I'm wanting to, just for my benefit and for the public's benefit to know what they're doing. And then also, I feel like the stipends, personally, I feel like the stipends are a bit low. And I'm wondering how those numbers were arrived at and if there's any way to increase that.
David, do you want to take that question? Thank you.
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Chair. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to address these issues. Councilmember Ramon, thank you for the question. I, I do want to say, I'm not, I'm not sure, and Mary Beth could maybe provide some better insight into this in terms of why the facilitator costs would be listed as ongoing. It may be because it does go over to another year. The work of the commission was anticipated to, we anticipated the commission, the current work lasting a year. We are looking at, as part of the question of what a sustainable model would look like, or sustaining the commission. But the work of the facilitator was not anticipated as an ongoing expense. And so I'm not, Mary Beth can maybe provide some insight into that, but I just wanted to add that there. Councilmember Ramon, if I could maybe first address the honorarium, and then I'll come back to the facilitator. And I will, as a follow-up to this, also send to council staff to pass along to all of you, the scope of work as a part of the contract from, as proposed by the facilitator. So you will see in more detail the work that they will be doing as the facilitators. The, the, you ask a very good question in terms of whether the amount could be increased. And it's a good question because we were starting from a standpoint of we didn't, we did not have a baseline. This is not something that the city has done in the past in providing honorariums to individuals sitting on different commissions. So the mayor's office did some research into other municipalities and also really tried to narrow that research to try and find some similarities around the work that others may be doing around racial equity. And we only found one example of a jurisdiction doing work around racial equity, environmental justice that, that provided an honorarium, I should say. And that was around $1,300. And so we were really kind of coming from the standpoint of, one, we were not trying to provide compensation in terms of the, the workload or what they were doing, but, but rather an honorarium in terms of recognition and appreciation for the work that they were engaging. And so through conversations in the mayor's office, conversations with council staff, who really appreciated having the ability to, to work through some of this with council staff as well, Kind of came up with what we felt was, was best and fair. And that included the tiered approach based on the way that the commission is set up with the core commission. The rest of the commission members and then the youth commission. So that's kind of how we arrived at the amounts that we are recommending. A, trying to find some baseline out there, but not having much success in terms of research. But really kind of working through and, and working through the purpose of it. Again, in terms of not trying to compensate for the workload, but really just recognize and appreciate the, the work that they were going to engage in. And so I guess I would, I'd say in terms of whether those amounts could be increased, that would, that is a policy decision. That is a conversation with the council in terms of whether the council desired to increase those amounts. Regarding council chair, are there any questions about that or should I just go on to the next item?
Yeah, go on to the next item. And are you going to talk about the update? Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So I wanted to, to address the second question about the work of the facilitator in key ways. And one, I just wanted to read to you. So if I'm, I'm looking to the side because I'm looking at a document. From the RFP that went out, what the, what was listed as the facilitator expectations that they were responding to. One, a handful of items, I just wanted to read to you real quick to give you a general sense of the work that they were responding to in the, in the RFP. To assist in building the commission membership and staff and facilitate the logistics of all meetings. Structure and hold a series of listening sessions with the community. To provide a forum for people to share and discuss their experiences with the Salt Lake City Police Department. Draft a community charter or compact that identifies the objectives of the commission. Prepare monthly verbal or written reports to the mayor and city council. Facilitate consensus in the creation of the work product recommendations. Draft a final work product. And finally advise and assist the city's communications teams. On how to publicly communicate the goals, work, process and products of the commission to the general public throughout the process. That, those were the expectations that were identified in the RFP that all applicants replied to. What I'm going to email you and I'll go through a little bit is the work plan that was submitted by the selected facilitator. So you can see how they kind of laid that out in a quarterly basis. You know, largely, I think it's fair to say that the facilitator, with the support of both the administration and council staff. Will, the facilitator will be the primary support for the commission. They will be running the meetings. They will be working with the commissioners and the core commission to identify agenda items. They are working with the commission right now on the structure going forward. Where previously it was meeting, the commission was meeting every week. And now they're going to, they have selected several subcommittees, which will, they'll start meeting every other week as a full commission and then in between subcommittees. And so the facilitators help with the structure of the commission and the work of the commission. The community engagement, some of the communication that you'll see on the document with Salt Lake City Police Department will be led by the facilitator. Of course, the facilitator in their responsibilities to, to the mayor and to the city council. Will be meeting with elected officials along the way to engage, making sure that the work that is being done is meeting the expectations of the elected officials. So they will be, you know, really leading the commission in that process. It is very clear to, to the facilitators and very clear to the commissioners that, you know, the commissioners are the decision makers in terms of what the recommendations are. And what, what the areas of focus are going to be moving forward. But the facilitators will be very heavily involved in that process. And also I should say, very heavily involved in making sure it's a process that is transparent. It is a process that includes a lot of engagement with the public. And so instead of kind of running through that document, I will be emailing at the council staff. So you will be able to see in more, in more detail how they lay that out in a quarterly basis. Councilmember Warren, Councilchair, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Any follow-up questions for David Litback?
Mr. Chair, I do have questions. So, um. What I'm always unclear with this group is they will provide some recommendations to, for some changes in the police department's procedures. And then the mayor will decide if she will implement those necessary changes. Is that how it's going to be?
Councilmember, I appreciate that question. Is, is, is in many ways, the commission is with the facilitators having those same conversations. The charge. I think the charge loosely is really policy procedures and budget. So it's a little bit broader than just procedures. And as far as the recommendation. It's really been approached this far that recommendations and the reports would be made to both the mayor and the city council. We know, well, I shouldn't say we know, we don't know. There likely are recommendations that would only take administrative action in terms of implementation. And there would be, likely there will be recommendations that maybe have, you know, citywide policy or budget implications that the council would, would need to take action or to implement. But based on that this is a commission that was called equally by the mayor and the city council. The discussion to this point has been that all recommendations should go back to the mayor and city council in its entirety. And not split those out based on who would be the implementer of the, of a specific recommendation. I hope that makes sense and provides some clarity.
Okay, yeah, that works. So, you know, the prices, obviously we started with, the council allocated $100,000 for the commissioners. And then we had to find a facilitator. And then we have some, you know, now our, now our budget is about 259,940 that we need to find. And, you know, it is, it is my thought that because it's related to the police department. It should come out, out of the police department's budget. I don't think we should use Fund Balance to, you know, to, to do this. To do this commission and new policies on things that are so related to the police department only. So that's my only hesitation with this budget. I'm not super hesitant on the amount. I'm hesitant on where it is coming from. And as we all know, the, the police department has a large budget. We also moved some money aside from the police department. So I would like this money to come out of their budget as it is, as investing and helping their department improve in areas that they might need to.
Okay, any, any questions about that? I have a question, Mary Beth. And is that possible to, I mean, I know it's, it's technically possible for. The council to, to make those budgetary changes, but how would that work at this point?
So the, the police department would have to come up with vacancy savings. They would have to hold positions open in order to fund this. It's really the only place that, that the police department has any type of expenditures. That's where most of their expenditures sit, is in vacancy savings.
Mr. Chair, if I could jump in a little bit, because I think that maybe Mary Beth wasn't as involved in the detail. But I think that that money we put into the holding account was largely calculated from vacancy savings. So I think that the flexibility that used to be in the budget there is not there. And so I think logistically, the way we would do this, if you wanted to fund it out of the police department, would actually be appropriating money from Fund Balance to the police department. To then pay for this. And so effectively, it might come from the same place. But one, one other thought I just wanted to share is. In the past, people have really emphasized the importance of funding, of funding not being in the department that's being sort of audited. So for example, the city's annual financial audit for. The city is in the city council or actually in the non-departmental budget, right? You wouldn't want the budget for the airport to be funded exclusively in the airport budget because it's sort of that layer of impartiality. It's really just an accounting thing. And so it's not that there's any difference in who signs the check, but. I don't know if Cindy wants to add anything on that, but.
Missing on that, I do have another point to make.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Mono has his hand up. Is it related to this or should I call on him first?
No, it's related, actually. My point's related to his question. So I would say call on him first.
Okay, Councilmember Mono, go ahead.
I was just wanting to follow up on what Jennifer Bruno said about vacancy savings. I know he put, I thought it was like 2.8 million into a holding account. So you're saying that holding account money is now already spent or, I don't understand that.
No, it's, it's in the holding account, which is not in the police department budget anymore. And so my only point of raising that was to, to talk about the flexibility that used to be in the police department budget is no longer in the police department budget. It's actually the non-departmental budget. And one of the things that we were going to do with that holding account money is wait and see what kinds of recommendations come from this commission. And to the extent that those recommendations need funding, that could be a funding source. I think separately and maybe parallel on that track. We were also kind of anticipating that there may come a point in the police department's budget year where they realize that they need that vacancy savings to pay for, let's say, overtime. And so I, I could see them coming to the council for a bunch of them at request for overtime. But I think that's, you know, that's later on down the year. That's, that's the only reason I raised it. That money is still there.
Okay, I guess the reason I ask is I, I agree with the principle of what I think Councilmember Valdemaros is trying to get at. And I feel like that that 2.8 million that's in the holding account is from the police department budget, even though it's now technically not in that. So to me that feels, and Councilmember Valdemaros, if you disagree, then please speak up. But I, I think that that money to me comes from the police department originally. So that seems appropriate to use for the, for this.
Okay. Any other questions on this or Councilmember Valdemaros, did you want to respond to that?
No, I agree with Councilmember Mono, like absolutely. I mean, it used to be the police department. Now it's a department, but yeah. Essentially it's the same. And I, and this would be a good use instead of our fund if you will. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I, could I address Councilmember Mono's previous comment about the honorarium and the facilitator fee? Two things. One is the facilitator, as we're describing it, it sounds like a person, but it's really a team. So there will be several people involved at different times is my understanding. And, and David Litback can, can correct me, but so that's the little, little bit of a difference is not comparing a salary of a person to small stipends to the board members. The other thing that the council could think about with the administration a little bit more on the honorarium. That does recognize the effort of the, of the members. I think one of the other things that was talked about early on, and it may be included, but it may not. And that is to help address the expenses that the board members would incur. So some of, you wanted to be sure that people from all walks of life, whether they're an hourly employee or a salary employee, would be able to participate. And so if they had hours lost due to their work or if they had babysitting expenses or. In non-COVID time, transportation expenses. So if, if you wanted to work with the administration to look at that further, I think that, that could be some additional reasoning. And then the other thing that is different, I think since this has been kind of finalized is that. That commission is, is really putting in a lot of time. More than maybe we all anticipated. So. Those are just some bits and pieces relating to the, the comment that Councilman Mono made.
Okay. Are there any other questions on this item or can we move on to? Let's see, item I1.
Mr. Chair, just really quickly before we move on from this item, I think that the original plan was that the council, because the council already straw pulled support. So that the administration could move ahead with the facilitator contract. I think the hope was that there would be a vote from the council next week. So if you could just let staff know if that timing still works or if we should adjust the timing. I don't know that the honorarium part of the discussion is as urgent as the facilitator part of the discussion. We can also split those.
So are you saying we need a straw poll today or we need one next week?
No, next, next week.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, item A1.
Item I1, Mr. Chair.
I1, yes.
Yes. There are three council added items and these are each follow-up items from council briefings earlier in the year. I1 is the $6.9 million for 10 transportation projects using the county quarter cent for sales tax. And this is a follow-up to the council's October 6 briefing. Where the council took a straw poll in support to release the funds as requested by the administration. This is the budget step to implement that straw poll. The approval is with the understanding that these funds and projects will be added to the capital improvement program, CIP. For fiscal year 21 and future years. As well as a redesigned CIP process, which is being developed. That the council will have the opportunity to provide policy guidance and feedback into that redesign. The council adopted CIP book, could include these projects and funds as well. And when a final version is available, we'll, we'll share it with the council. If the council wanted to be reminded what the projects are, attachment one shows the funding log. These are the names of the projects, the dollar amounts, and then the scope, the description of what the project is. And that'll be attached to the motion sheet. This mirrors the process that we use for CIP each year.
Okay, thank you.
I2, this is $55,000 from Fund Balance. For the city to cover some employee paid contributions for certain police officers and firefighters. In the Utah retirement system, Tier 2 hybrid retirement plan. It would also reimburse those employees who have already made those contributions this fiscal year. The council had a briefing on this item on October 6.
Okay.
And the last item, I3, this is $194,000. Of re-scoping remaining grant funds that need to be used. The funding was included in the annual budget for CIP. But it was inadvertently left off of the project-specific funding log that the council approved in the summer. The funding would be used by IMS for new servers at the Public Safety Building.
Okay.
And that is the last item.
All right, thank you. Anybody else or anyone have any questions on the last items on the budget amendment? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to butt in. Can we ask then if?
Can we ask then if those servers at the Public Safety Building might be eligible for public safety impact fees?
The impact fee plan would need to be updated, and we would need to check with the consultants to see if they may be partially eligible. But since the administration is working on updating that plan, we can ask.
Okay. Count, or Mary Beth Thompson.
So I wanted to correct, these weren't grant funds. These are bond funds from older bonds that we need to spend specifically in the PSB. So it has to be spent, and it has to be spent quickly in the PSB. Can't be spent anywhere else. So it's not grant funds, it's old bond funding.
Okay. Thank you. All right, councilmembers, that brings us to item 6 on our agenda, which is a tentative break. And we're a little over, but I think we can still, let's just do 15 minutes instead of 20. So if everybody can come back at 4:50, then we'll see you then. Back to our meeting. We are on Agenda Item Number 7, which is an update to the city's 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan Guiding the Use of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities Act funds. And we have taken us through this briefing Ben Lucky from the council office, Tony Milner, Hand Policy and Program Manager, Blake Thomas, Cam Director, and Jennifer Schuman, Hand Deputy Policy, Deputy Director. Ben, you want to start us off?
This is the first briefing on the amendment to the consolidated plan,
the five-year plan and the one-year annual action plan. The council is scheduled to take tentative action next Tuesday on October 20th. The council approved the current version of the five-year plan and the one-year action plan back in May. The amendments before the council are necessary for the city to utilize the one-time CARES Act funding being awarded to the city through HUD. Amanda, would you please pull up the comparison table? We might need to zoom in a little bit depending on how it pulls up. Staff made this comparison table to look at the ongoing funding that the city receives each year in HUD grants compared to the one-time funding the city is receiving under the CARES Act.
Thank you, Ben. Just one moment while I pull that up. There we go. Okay. Awesome.
So what the tables should, what you should take away from the table is that the total one-time funding, it's the second column from the right, it's almost a million dollars more than the city got in the ongoing annual awards for the current fiscal year. So that's great news. And I especially want to point out the ESG row. So 301,000 is what the city got for the annual ongoing award. And the one-time funding is almost $4 million. This is more than 10 times what the city would normally get for this ongoing grant. ESG is focused on homeless assistance and homeless prevention. So I want to highlight that significant opportunity for the city to address those community needs. All of these grants have a spending deadline of September of 2022. You can take it down unless there are any questions from the council.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry. I don't have any. We, thank you. Doesn't look like we have any questions.
The process, once the consolidated plan is amended, is going to mirror the process that the council goes through in the spring for the ongoing grants. That is, organizations will submit their applications and the resident advisory board will review in a public meeting each of the funding requests, and then the board will make a funding recommendation. The mayor makes a second set of funding recommendations, and then both sets of funding recommendations go to the council, who makes the final award decisions. And has a presentation for. And as Hand goes through each of the funding log categories, it'll be a spreadsheet, it'd be helpful for the council to share any community needs that are not represented, or if you have any questions about the categories as they're touched on. And I believe Amanda has the presentation to show. And let's see if she's got it. There it is. And I'll turn the time over to Tony, and Amanda can progress the slides when he's ready.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ben. But actually, Blake would like to go first to kind of introduce these funding.
Thanks. Thank you. So, and thank you, Ben, for that overview. I appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity to present the following substantial amendments and recommended funding categories related to the city's $7.1 million in CARES Act HUD COVID funding. And thank you for reading the 419-page transmittal so we can come in well under the 45 minutes on the agenda item. I joke with you. So these one-time HUD funds, as Ben did a great job pointing out with the table, they are, in addition to our annual HUD dollars, they're intended to help our city and its most vulnerable populations respond to and recover from the coronavirus pandemic. These funds were announced in the spring, and since then, Hand staff has been working to understand the eligible usage of these funds and coordinating with our regional partners and community experts on how best to utilize and deploy these funds, making sure to include partners focused on equity. Some of those groups have been the Utah Housing Coalition, Utah Community Action, Communidades Unidas, Salt Lake County Aging Services, and Salt Lake School District. So before you, as I mentioned, are the substantial amendments to the city's already adopted 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan and Citizen Participation Plan, as well as the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan. If the substantial amendments are approved, when action is scheduled, the city can then move forward with the administrative process to access the funds and undergo a competitive application process. After the application period closes and proposals go through the CD or Community Development CIP Board Review, Hand staff will then come back and seek your review and recommendations on specific projects and providers or recipients for these funds. So the proposed action for the following meeting is essentially to allow the process to begin, to then have competitive applications to you, for organizations to utilize these dollars. It goes through the CDCIP Board. It then goes before the mayor and then will land back again here before you to weigh in, opine, and oversee the direction of the dollars and how they're allocated. I just really briefly want to highlight that Hand's grant administration team, which has had vacancies, and the homeless engagement and response team have really been working hard since March to participate in HUD coronavirus-related activities. And that covers dozens, if not hundreds, of meetings and webinars in addition to research, as we were not anticipating a global pandemic earlier this year. Tony will dive deep into the work that's been done with the state, county, and other municipalities and community partners. But lastly, I just want to note that what I believe is now Budget Amendment Number Four is crucial to the implementation of the CARES HUD CV or coronavirus funding in our community as it's the mechanism by which council instructs us to receive the 7.1 million for response and recovery dollars from HUD and the budget to assure that city staff are in place to administer these funds. So the staffing includes CAN and Hand employees, but also individuals and finance and the attorney's office are all part of those administrative funds that Tony will dig into in his presentation. So when that's, when and if the budget amendment for the 7.1 million is approved, we'll then be able to get under contract with providers. So with that introduction and your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Tony to go through the prepared presentation and answer any questions you have, and most importantly, receive your input and guidance.
Yes, please. Tony, it's good to see you.
Thanks, Council Chair. I appreciate that. Thanks, Blake, and thank you, Ben, so much. And huge thank you to the council for your time to go through these funds, as well as your direction on how to deploy these funds in the community. I'll go through just the basics of what we know, what we don't know, and then again, what's here to seek your direction on how to use these funds. So we, like you, we've been watching really closely the rates of COVID impact in our city. We're grateful to you, the council, and the mayor, and all the measures and the assistance that have currently been placed to mitigate the spread of COVID and assist the many businesses, residents, and health providers physically and financially impacted by this pandemic. Amanda, can you advance the next slide? So just an overview, the purpose of these CARES Act, the CARES Act HUD COVID funds are to assist our community with COVID-related activities, programs, or projects respond to and recover from the COVID pandemic, targeting and assisting individuals, households, nonprofits, businesses, or communities most affected by COVID. This could be rent and food assistance for those who lost their job. It could be PPE for service providers on the front line. The guidance from HUD has been basically, address the unique needs of your community with these funds. However, these still need to be eligible HUD activities, and I can't stress that enough. HUD has been very clear that the use of these funds must still meet HUD national objectives for the benefit of an improvement of low-income households or neighborhoods and/or vulnerable populations. So all activities and usage of funds that the city proposes will be subject to HUD review and approval. This approval process may either expedite or delay the deployment of these funds. So HUD has also been really clear about how these funds, that they should not be duplicated or duplicate existing resources. So, for example, if the city decides to fund a small business loan program, then the city has to document that no other similar resource is currently in place or accessible at the time of. So it's been tricky. They basically put it on us to basically do all the tracking, and basically, if we ever are audited or have to justify these funds, we have to demonstrate that no other similar activity was available to the residents at that time. And although these funds are meant to be responsive, HUD has also advised that they are the last dollar in. So because of this, Hand, Hart, and Hart staff have been working closely with our regional partners, especially the county and the state, to track and coordinate all federally funded assistance programs such as FEMA, TANF, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, or Community Service Block Grants. So since the CARES Act was passed, the city has received a notice of three different rounds of funding to the city. One in April, June, September, totaling the 7.1 million for the grant programs mentioned, Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Service Block Grant, and Housing Opportunities for People with HIV and AIDS. And again, I just want to stress, again, it's already been mentioned, but that these funds are separate from our annually, annual federal HUD funding and does not affect our annual amount that we receive from HUD. Currently, we are in our federal funding year for fiscal year 2020-2021. And these one-time funds will not, will be recognized, they will be recognized in this program year of 2020. So it's something we have to kind of maneuver and do and work in to make sure we're doing it in compliance with HUD. And in fact, we're just now launching our regular annual federal application process for 2021-2022. That will be announced tomorrow. Tomorrow, you'll be seeing more information about that. Like Ben said, for these HUD COVID funds, we'll be following a similar but expedited process for these funds as we do with our regular annual HUD funds. A competitive application process, CDCIP, Resident Advisory Board Review, recommendations by the mayor, filing recommendations by you, the council. Thankfully, HUD has placed fewer restrictions on these funds than our regular annual funds. So for example, there's normally a 60-40 ESG split for shelter services cap. There's also a cap for, on our regular funds for a CDBG for only 15% of what we get can be used for public services, which is the most competitive application for always that small pot. Thankfully, both of those caps for these funding have been waived. Thankfully, HUD has provided many other waivers, allowances, and increased eligible activities with these funds. But again, they still have to be HUD-eligible, or they have to address it in a notice saying that we are waiving or allowing such and such. So overall, we're fortunate and grateful at the opportunity to access these funds and to address the impact of COVID on our city's low-income and vulnerable communities. Amanda, can you advance the slide? Sorry, it's a little bit small. Hopefully, you got a chance to look at this. So this slide is just basically a brief summary of the timeline and the deadlines for the HUD COVID funds. So if you see, the first four boxes cover March till now, and then there's a box for next steps, and then there's a box for deadlines. So since March, again, like Blake said, we've been focusing on understanding what's allowable with these funds, but also understanding how best to address the COVID needs in Salt Lake City. HUD has been very helpful, but they've also had to say many, many times that this is all we know as of now, and more information may be coming. Overall, our timeline is different than the states or the counties and their funding. The state, for example, is under a different, quicker timeline because they have to address statewide responses. Also, we've had to watch and document what other CARES Act funding has been committed in our city, again, to prevent duplicity of activities. So since the CARES Act was passed in March 20, on March 27th, HUD has come up with, again, the three different rounds to the different recipients. So as of now, there shouldn't be any more rounds that we know of, but it does depend on any further action taken by Congress for stimulus relief. HUD continues to periodically release notices of usage, waivers, allowances, and then offer trainings on all of those different notices. So some important dates to point out here on the timeline is actually March 10th. So this is when the mayor's declaration of COVID occurred, and HUD has basically given us different options. They basically said, you as a community can cite back to January 21st, which is what the CARES Act recognizes as COVID in the U.S. You can cite back to that. If you want to go back even further before January 21st, you have to get permission for HUD, from HUD. The mayor's declaration on March 10th is probably the easiest for us as the city to kind of point back to, but we can have a conversation if that. So basically, that just means any funds that we, any programs that we work with, that we commit, can go back, expenses expensed during that timeframe now and going back to March 10th are eligible activities. But again, that's depending on what we, is decided on and activities. So, but just kind of keep that in mind. Deadline to commit the funds is technically 180 days or six months after we apply for and receive the funds. So we have yet to apply for and receive the funds. Once we do that, once we sign a grant agreement with HUD, then that starts the clock for 180 days, six months, to bring all of the different funding under contract. There's another quick deadline coming up, relatively speaking, which is that 20% of our ESG funding must be spent by September 2021, or we risk losing all of our ESG COVID funding. And it's already been mentioned, and I just want to underscore it again, all HUD CD funds must be spent by September 2022. For October, you can see there on the timeline, this is the point now where we're kind of brought before you the council, the substantial amendments and the budget categories for your consideration. Again, the substantial amendments, it sounds like a big word, substantial amendments. This is the word that HUD has asked us to use, and we do want to take it serious because these are amendments to the approved plans that the city has adopted. Already mentioned, the consolidated plan for 2020-2024 and the associated Citizen Participation Plan, as well as the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan. As you can see from the transmittal, all we're really, truly technically doing with the substantial amendments are recognizing in our anticipated resources and our expected resources, these new funds. Again, then also for the Citizen Participation Plan, anytime we have to do a substantial amendment and inform the public of what we're doing with these funds, we have to do a public comment period. In our plan currently, it says 30 days. HUD actually has given us five days, to bring that down to five days, to kind of expedite the process of informing the public and getting these funds deployed. We decided to align with city process and stick with 14-day public noticing, public comment periods. So that's really, those are the three amendments that are in front of you is the transmittal. Part of the transmittal also included a public comment period, these three changes. That was held between September 11th and through September 24th. It was widely posted. Residents were asked to make comments to the council at the hand. No comments were received. So also worth noting on this timeline is the amount of collaboration that has occurred since March regarding these funds. In addition to working with the county and the state partners, this collaboration has included many conversations and phone calls and emails with our HUD field rep, a city internal working group that met twice, that we pulled together to hear from the different city staff, including parks, planning, transportation, CAN, economic city staff, including parks, planning, transportation, can, economic development, council staff, and mayor's staff as well participated, which was great to get their input. We also pulled together a, we also had the option to utilize a HUD technical assistance rep that was working just with Salt Lake City and able to work with them directly. We also informed and briefed and got input from the CDCIP board. We wanted to loop them in to this process because we'd be coming to them anyway. We also put together an advisory panel. So this is advisory panel, we wanted to kind of, the purpose of, it was a pretty good diverse gathering, but we really wanted to hear from like the large perspective of data, but then at the same time, those who are actually from the community, representing the community. It was a great spectrum, Swanson Impact Center, Kenzie Gardner, you know, that is, you need us. So it was a great group to kind of pull together, to kind of help us kind of craft and give direction to where these funds need to be deployed. So the result of all this collaboration was a deeper understanding of our community needs, identifying where gaps exist, but also mapping out any benefit clips that individuals are facing, or the different eviction moratoriums that are, have occurred or currently occurring, and how our assistance might help with those clips coming up. Amanda, can you advance to the next slide? So the next three slides are a framework of, and again, I want to stress, this is a framework of a proposal that we are bringing to you for your input. Nothing is set in stone. These are budget categories and funding recommendations that we are trying to give some scope to, to really identify when we have these large one-time sources of money need to be unduplicated, need to be HUD eligible. We want to make sure that if we put it out to the community for a competitive application, we're giving some guidance on what we've identified as the need, but then also for what individual or agencies to apply for. These are also in the transmittal that you received as well, page 392, under Funding Recommendations. So these categories labeled here as projects or programs, so they were derived from HUD guidance, but also mainly from input from those groups previously mentioned. So the intention of these categories is to meet a range of Salt Lake City's unique COVID-related identified and forecasted community priorities. Because again, we're trying to forecast as well the current need, what we have as well, but then also, so the lifespan of these funds to utilize. Service providers or entities, it says entities there, the service providers, like so, other than the city that we've identified, we haven't listed anyone because obviously we haven't gone out for competitive application. Once we do, then we'll come back to you for your input and recommendations. So when we open the application to the community, these categories will help the applications on what the city is actually funding. Overall, these activities and amounts evolved from a robust community needs engagement process. But again, these are just a framework, and we're seeking your input to finalize these budget categories so we can start the process to deploy these funds. I've talked a lot, I'm sure you have a lot of questions. With your permission, I can go into detail about these three next slides for the different budget categories, or I can answer any specific questions that you have now or about these budget categories.
Let's turn it over and see if council members have specific questions. Anyone have questions on these specific categories? Doesn't look to get, so you can probably just move on.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
So this first one is Community Development Block Grant. The best thing about this source is that it's meant to be flexible. It's meant to be able to assist individuals, households, nonprofits, small businesses. So it's, it covers a pretty good range. The main purpose of what we tried to identify here is then stabilizing those many different organizations or individuals, organizations through the pandemic. So you can see that the first row basically says housing stability, and so what we're proposing is three months of mortgage assistance payments for households that are 80% AMI or below. Right now, the city, we're the only ones in the state that's offering any type of mortgage assistance with approved funds that were approved earlier this year in July, and those went to NeighborWorks and CDCU. We're continuing to watch the effect on the progress and the impact of those, but everything is, that we've looked at is basically saying that foreclosures are going to be going up and up and up once, once folks are out of their income, not able to find work, running out of benefits. So this is something that we would hate for individuals in the city to lose all that built-up equity and assets. We put that, so we've, we put that there with the proposed amount of $300,000. And again, all of these amounts, basically, we put together to say, if there was one agency to apply for this and to do this, or maybe one or two, this would still be a good, effective, adequate program that would include services plus admin costs for who applies. Public service agencies, so this is for nonprofit organizations to prepare for and prevent COVID. So this would be open to all the different nonprofit agencies, especially the ones who are on the front lines dealing with COVID day in, day out, to kind of help offset their needs and their costs as well. And again, that would basically be mainly PPE, but if, we leave, we could leave it up to them to basically say, this is what we need. Is it just staffing? Is it Plexiglas? Is it what? And especially, we're going to foresee that this is going to be going for a very long time, of just these kind of like distancing, cleaning measures, et cetera. So we put that in there for them, an amount of $350,000. Community stabilization, so this is great for different agencies to apply for. The city could even apply for this, or it could be eligible. This is basically anything like digital access, food security, any kind of targeted resources. It's basically more of like an open, how has our, how's our, how's our community been affected by COVID? What is something that we have listed here that we haven't even thought of that, you know? But again, it comes down to vulnerable populations, basic needs, and it kind of, but it is open enough for agencies to kind of write for different programs to help out individuals for that amount of 500,000. We also included something for small businesses as well, so economic development for small business grants. So this would be grants, not loans, we didn't have to repay. And I know that there's a lot of, you know, earlier I've been saying about duplicated services, and there is a couple of different loan programs, small, small business loan programs currently eligible, but this would be something specifically for minority-owned and women-owned businesses here in Salt Lake City, for small businesses. All the data and information that we've seen is that they are being left out, and so this would be specifically targeted to them to make sure that they are stabilized and make it through the COVID pandemic. The, the next one is a little bit odd and strange, just because at the time when we were presenting, bringing this transmittal forward to you, we got heard of the third round of funding that the city could tap into. And so basically, that was a total of 999,000. We basically took that amount, left it for you guys to, I wanted to review with you guys, discuss with you. We took out the 20% admin, but then, other than that, and then just kind of left that as a to-be-determined, that we can come back and revisit. Something, something to note is, all of these, this is something that is up to you, that you can decide whether or not we want to pull out some of these and approve these and move forward. We can do that now, and we can hold some of this back, but then again, as soon as we start releasing some of the funds, then that six-month clock begins, where we then eventually have to commit all the other, all of the other funds. So just kind of something to consider, something to think about. Any questions about the proposed budget categories here with the CDBG?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Mondo.
Can we just clarify, the housing stability, how is that not a duplicated thing that we're already doing? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so great question. So those are limited funding, so we propose that these will basically, once those are done, that the city is currently offering, then this will take over.
So it can be something we're already doing, but we're just adding more to a, what was previously limited amount?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Dugan, did you have a question as well?
Yeah, on the small business grants, are we targeting a certain amount of, a maximum on the grant, or we're trying to hit a lot, or just a broad scope across the board? Is that?
So that's going to, that's to be determined if, whether or not, and I think we, we're going to write it, if we, when we're writing applications or call it requests for applications, we can write it open enough to basically say eligible activities such as, you know, helping for them pay their rent, paying for payroll. We can say, we can specify a timeframe of how many months that can be as well, and then we kind of turn it back to the applicants to then say, you know, what would you see would be a substantial and adequate program to stabilize these businesses?
Okay, because that's, that's all on us or on you, and then we would just approve it?
Yes.
Any other questions on that? Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Great. And if we want to go, Amanda, you want to go to the next slide? So Emergency Solutions Grant, this is something, and Ben earlier said it best too, this is a great opportunity to address the homeless needs of our community. This is, let's kind of keep in mind too, because this is all supposed to be COVID response recovery. The homeless population, they are out in the elements or they're in congregate areas. They have limited access to facilities, to medical care. They have a higher rate of infection and exposure than the normal population. So there's a lot of unfortunate data points that are hitting this community a lot higher than others, and so they kind of falling into the more critical, you know, what can we, what can we do, what can, what needs to be done for this community? When we're working with, and kind of coming up with the, the following budget categories, we worked really closely again with our HUD TA, which specialized in ESG. We've also worked with our Heart team, the mayor's office, also the Salt Lake Valley Coalition to End Homelessness, to loop them in as well, as well as like what the county and state are doing for other similar activities. So this all kind of boiled down to, from working with all of them, getting that unique insider perspective that all of them bring, are the following budget categories. So it's homeless prevention, and this is six months of rent assistance plus, well, six months of rent assistance. So this can be for folks who are currently housed, let's keep them housed. So this is separate than the mortgage payment, these are for renters, and then this would be 50% AMI or below to make sure that they stay in, in housing. We set aside, and we see a strong need of that, the city is most, it seems like we're mostly, the majority of rent renters in the city. We know that obviously if people are losing their homes, then they're doubling up with other people, their exposure rate to COVID just goes up and up, especially with being displaced, let's keep them stable in their housing as much as possible. That's why we set aside the largest amount for 1.7 million. The next one is rapid rehousing, and this is specifically for those who are experiencing homelessness or are about to be homeless, or even if they're doubled up, living in a car, living in a motel, again, high exposure risk, so we want to make sure that we're getting into something, and this covers rent deposit utilities to get them into their own stable housing, where they'll be safe, stable, but then also stop the spread of COVID. We also identified a street outreach as well. So this would be targeted outreach initiatives and efforts to basically, you know, just to make sure that people are getting into safe, safe shelter, where they're not exposed to COVID, or actually getting them into housing options, again, so they will, won't be exposed to COVID. The last one is emergency quarantine shelter. Basically, what this is, this is what a lot of the communities are doing around the country as well. It's just, either they're funding it now, or they're setting it aside. We're going to be going through a couple of winters coming up soon. The lifespan of these funds goes through two winters. We don't know what the quarantine needs are going to be for the homeless individuals in our community, so it's a matter of kind of planning for the future to basically set aside some, some funding. And, and again, we can set this aside, we can go under contract with someone to basically offer this it when needed, but we did make sure that this was something that we heard very, very important from the different providers and agencies that I mentioned earlier. This was probably the number one need that they wanted us to make sure that we included. With that, any, any questions about the ESG budget categories?
I have a, I have a question for the chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Mondo.
Tony, thank you so much, this is a lot of work. Can you remind me when these funds are due to be used, like, there is a timeline for this, that needs to go out?
Yes, so great question. So the, the end timeline is September 2022.
Okay, September 2022, so we have some good time, okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Amanda, can you go to the next slide? So this is the last one for Housing Opportunities for Persons with HIV and AIDS. This HUD, the CARES Act set this aside because this is a very vulnerable population, immune, they are immune compromised. They, so basically, this is something that, this is a population that needs to be, have access to safe quarantine space and medical providers as much as possible. So special funds were set aside for this population. When we, this is a various, the, the agencies that we currently work with that utilize or apply for our other HOPL funding, they, we reached out to them when we first got notice about this and basically said, what do you see as the need? Do we need to be paying for motels, phones, like, what, what do you see as the need? And they basically said mortgage and rent assistance, because that's to then keep those households stable, or those currently experiencing non-housing or homelessness, to get them into housing as much as possible, as soon as possible. And so that's listening to them, listening to those providers who know best, we included that as just the one budget category. Any questions about that, that budget question? Okay, Amanda, can you go to the next slide? So again, so before you is substantial amendments, and again, it's a big word, substantial amendments, but it's really pretty small alteration, alterations, so that way we can start the process to start accessing these COVID funds. And then also before you as well is the recommended funding categories, if we were to, if you, after your consideration, if you, and however you want to proceed, to then basically start to the process to access, apply for, access, and then deploy the funds. So again, the next step from you is basically just your consideration of the resolution to allow the city to accept and administer the COVID funding. So thank you so much for all the questions that you guys have asked already, but the biggest question that we have for you is just, do these funding categories meet the needs that you are hearing from our community?
I'm going to say yes, Mr. Chair. I think this is a lot of opportunities, and I'm happy with the categories that you guys have chosen. The only thing I would like to request, if possible, is to have reports, like quarterly reports, or even if, if it's an email or public that says, this is how many people we've helped in the last three months, you know, or four months, whatever that may be, so that we can keep the community informed that these funds are being used the right way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tony, this is awesome, and just kind of, just to piggyback on Councilmember Mondo, I agree with her that this is a perfect thing and something we need desperately in the city, so appreciate all the hard work.
Okay, just looking to see, any other council members want to speak to this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Fowler.
And Tony, I apologize if you mentioned this. I know when the funds need to be spent by, but do... I know when the funds need to be spent by, but do, it sounded at the beginning of the presentation that we sort of needed to make a decision on where we were spending those funds sooner rather than later. For example, the slide with the CDBG, if we wanted to say, let's take some of this money and instead of put X amount here, we're going to put X amount in this other box or include a different box that we want to put money in or something, that, that, those conversations need to happen yesterday or soon, or rather than later. Is that what I heard you say?
So this, it all depends on what we want to fund as the city. If we want to lump this all together and do one activity and do, and do that. And so basically, it depends on what we want to fund and then when. So yes, I will say the sooner the better. That way there, it's in the community. We do recognize that there are still a lot of cliffs. Most of the other CARES Act assistance for enhanced payroll, paychecks for unemployment is gone. There's, there's a lot of the other different protections that are gone. We're facing the final, final, final eviction moratoriums that are coming up. So there's a lot of things that could definitely align with approval. And again, just getting the ball rolling to get these deployed in the community, the sooner the better would be great.
And, and I bring this up, for example, on the slide with the, the, the second slide, not CDBG, but ESG, 700,000 towards a temporary shelter. I, I, and you mentioned that you'd been working with the county and with the shelter homeless and, and the coalition. So I, I guess I just am like a little bit more curious on some of those details. And maybe we don't have those details, we're just kind of earmarking this. But it sounds like if we earmark it, then that's, that's where it has to be spent. So if we said, yes, go forward with the plan today, that as it's written right now, as you've presented it to us, with all the money in the boxes that they're in, then that's where all of that has to be spent as per regulations with the federal government, right?
It is, yes, if you were, if you were to do that, then we would start a process. We, there is a process to basically pull back funding to basically go, never mind, we don't want to. But it's, it's a difficult process. So the, the more that we can actually kind of now put ourselves on the right path, the better. You do still have the option to, as the council, to pull out some of the budget categories. And you, you use that, the amount given, or increase or decrease the amount, and say, Tony, go ahead, start releasing these funds first, and we'll go through that process. And then some money that you want to set aside for an activity to really think on or understand better. And that's just something that I'm more than happy to provide as much information and I'll be the HUD surrogate as much as possible. But then it's still, once, once we release the first pot of money, then the clock is starting for six months to come under contract. And to your specific question too about the shelter, it's up to us to write it in a way to basically say, a quarantine shelter is, could be this, this, and this. It would be, and we, and there's a way to go under contract to basically keep it open enough that it is flexible enough to meet our needs.
I appreciate a little bit more of that information. I know that, you know, we've been working hard to not be the sole caretaker of, of temporary winter shelter and kind of pushing other municipalities to, to help out with some of those things. And so that was sort of the basis of my question there, right? Of that, I, I think it's important, I want that little box there that we're putting money into. I just am curious of what other municipalities in the county are doing to supplement that, that same funding, right? And so just some of those questions pop into my head, but like my overall is like, yes, let's start spending this money in the places that you've suggested. But then some of those just little details pop into my head it from, for lots of different reasons. So, thanks for giving me a little bit more information on that, Tony.
Other questions? And Tony, one question that Cindy and I were chatting about is, once applications are in, if council and admin felt that they would like to fund more in one category than they anticipated, would they be able to do that or would they not be able to?
To increase the, to increase the budget category? As long as there is enough to pull it from, from another category, then yes.
Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ask a similar question. If I'm understanding correctly, hypothetically, if no applications were received for one of the funding categories, then the council could take the money in that funding category that didn't get applications and use it in a different funding category. Is that right, Tony?
Thank you. No, yeah, that makes sense. So yes, as long as it's a HUD eligible activity, then it's up to us of how much we fund it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just to be really clear about this, I'm looking for what is the way to preserve the most flexibility for the city council and mayor? So if, if these categories are all set, as Councilmember Fowler was talking about, and then the council or mayor saw that they'd like to put less in the emergency shelter category and more in another category, could they do that? Or are they bound by the amounts that they initially estimate to go into those categories?
No, so they are not bound.
Okay. Thanks, I was just being obsessively sure.
Okay. All right, doesn't look like we have any other questions. Thank you, Ben and Tony, and thank you, Blake. Appreciate all that information and your presentation. We'll move on to our final agenda item that it, aside from the written briefing, which is the Docless Shared Mobility Device or e-scooters follow-up discussion on the proposed ordinance. And with us for that, we have Sam Owen from City Council Office and John Larson from Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it's okay with you, I'll go just through a brief introduction and then turn it over to John Larson, and I think maybe also Jennifer McGrath and, and/or maybe also Blake Thomas. I'm not sure who among them is going to speak first, but the administration today will return to the council and discuss a specific proposal for an amendment to the city's consolidated fee schedule in the context of the shared mobility regulation ordinance. The proposal, the fee schedule proposal that will be discussed today is consistent with the most conservative fiscal analysis that council staff has seen with regard to the city's estimates of its costs in relation to the Docless Shared Mobility Program. If the council were amenable to the proposal, the ordinance and fee schedule amendment could have a public hearing pending an updated transmittal. After that, the item could potentially be acted upon by the council before the end of the year. So at a high level, kind of the benchmarks or items to be addressed during this briefing would be an overview of council questions and concerns from the last briefing, August 11th, 2020, a review of how that feedback is being considered as part of the current proposal, maybe some discussion about why the current fee proposal is justified, how the administration arrived at that and is recommending it. And then a brief note about the future, the Transportation Division, the administration would return in some subsequent budget amendment to make a request to the council regarding its costs in-house for managing the program. So this is the fee amendment, the fee schedule amendment. It's unrelated to unappropriation to the Transportation Division, some, you know, weeks or months down the road, where they'll come back and talk with the council about resources and capacity for managing the program. Finally, council members might be interested in scheduling, check in with the department to come back and talk about how things are going after adoption of the ordinance, including the status of a potential request for proposals program that wouldn't, that the number of operators in the city would enable the city to more strictly enforce against some of the activity that council members have heard so much about from constituents. It's kind of in this category that I would locate feedback that we've gotten from council members that today's briefing would be especially useful if it highlighted what actions or changes constituents might expect to see upon adoption of the ordinance. That kind of ties in with the RFP process and the limiting of matters in the city and the more proactive enforcement that could facilitate. So that's all I have. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I would turn it over to the department to speak with you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that introduction, Sam, Mr. Chair and Council. I just want to say thank you for getting this scheduled, for setting time aside today to discuss electric scooters or Docless Shared Mobility Devices, if you're a bit of a policy nerd. But I'll use scooters for this discussion. My hope is that John Larson and I can provide an update and answer your questions, incorporate any feedback that you might have, and ultimately move forward with an approved ordinance that we're all excited about and a fee structure with an associated amount so that we can begin the RFP selection process. So I'll start with the financial components and then give a quick overview of the policy considerations, if that is okay.
That's great.
Thanks. So as a refresher, the Finance Department did a cost justification analysis that eliminated more than $200,000 in annual cost burden that electric scooters place on city resources. So CAN and the Transportation Division have humbly recommended a hybrid approach with an upfront fee based on the number of scooters with a 10 cent per ride fee. We have worked with other municipalities, as well as with the National Association of City Transportation officials, of which John and his team members are a part of, to arrive at this recommended fee structure. Nationwide, our proposed fees could be considered average, kind of a middle point. We're, we're not the highest in the country, we're not the lowest in the country. It's our opinion that the proposed fee balances economic and ridership variability as it relates to use and consistency in terms of revenue, the potential for infrastructure expenses such as corrals or dedicated parking, an amount that multiple vendors have indicated they can absorb, and lastly, an amount that complies with state legislation. So that was a lot of the, that was a lot of the backend work that has led to that recommendation. As you know, the fees will go into the general fund to be spent, however council sees fit, and would likely come in the future as a budget amendment proposal or, or at the next fiscal year. So moving away from that financial component and into more of the policy or, or user experience as it relates to the city, I'll start with the changes that we and your constituents can expect as part of an approved ordinance and future vendor contract. So I want to caveat that this, I don't assume will happen on day one, but is a very important ordinance consideration that I think will occur and feel confident well over time. Sidewalk riding restrictions will go from policy to law in reference to the ordinance. Scooter parking requirements will go from policy to law, and equipment safety standards will go from policy to law. So I think those are issues that we've seen in the past and a direction that the ordinance will take us. As it relates to the RFP process, we intend to have improved compliance on sidewalk riding and parking due to the ability for stronger incentives and disincentives between vendors and riders. We will have fewer vendors, it's been proposed up to two vendors, which will result in more order. We anticipate having improved collaboration with businesses, UTA, and other major stakeholders in hoping that in addition to how fun they are to ride in terms of recreation, there will also be the utility as it relates to public transportation and getting to and from work and other errands. We also anticipate improved management of where scooters are deployed through improved, improved collaboration between the city and our selected vendors, which I believe is a really important equity issue to consider as it relates to the deployment and location of scooters in our city. And when the time comes, lastly, as it relates to the RFP process, scooter revenue could lead to distinct and dedicated parking, among other things, as it relates to order in the city, as well as protecting the right of way and access for persons with disabilities and other needs. So that being said, I just wanted to bring that up as the financial consideration, and then also those outcomes that we hope to achieve through the ordinance and moving forward with the policy. At the risk of embarrassing Sam Owen, I just want to say that I've received feedback that his counsel and involvement in this process has been invaluable. I would hope to invite him or have a council representative to be on the RFP selection committee if we choose to move forward. And in addition to, to his continued involvement, I would welcome or hope to give council updates at each benchmark as it relates to the RFP, as far as the drafting, publication, the closing date, the scoring process and, and the final awards. So I would like to do that through formal or more informal channels. And then finally, I would be happy to offer a semi-annual update to council on how things are going as it relates to the ordinance and the RFP and our vendors to ensure that the outcomes and the hopes that your constituents have expressed to you are realized. So that is, that is the extent of my update. Thanks for handling a lot of me this evening, afternoon. And I have John Larson here for any of those hard hit questions.
Thank you. John, anything you want to add before we open it up to questions?
I don't think so. I think Blake covered it really well. So, thank you, Blake.
Councilmembers, questions on this? Councilmember Rogers?
Mine's not really a question, it's more of a comment. It's all the hard work that's gone into this. I think that we've gone around in circles with this whole ordinance with the scooters, and I think we've ended up in a really good spot. I think we're, I feel like most council members are comfortable, and I think that it's comfortable for where the staff's moving forward. So I just want to give it, you know, a good shout out to both staff in transportation as well as our staff and Sam. And so I, like, this has been a long one coming, and for some reason, I don't know why it's been so difficult to get to this situation. So I'm excited to move forward.
Yeah, I would just echo that as well, but I know I've been one of the more outspoken council members on this issue. And I think more than anything at this point, the public just wants to see us start to take some action in one direction and so that we can see whether this ordinance is working and then make tweaks along the way. Because what we have right now, I think, is what, and the uncertain, what we have right now have right now, I think is what, and the uncertain, what we have right now is, I think, what everybody is so upset about, and the uncertainty of what, how we're going to deal with it going forward is just adding and compounding that problem. So I'm really excited that we're finally moving forward, and I appreciate all of the hard work from, from John and Transportation. And I really do hope that we'll continue through these selection process to continue to focus on safety for pedestrians and for riders, and I know that that's a priority for you as well. But that's going to, you know, I'll just keep, keep playing that record. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Fallow.
I just wanted to thank all the staff, both from the admin and council, for all the hours that they've spent putting this together, meeting with us, being patient with us, especially with me. And I'm excited for this project to move forward, so I can't wait to see what the public comment brings, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have something ready. So, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate all the hard work.
Yes, we are planning on something before the end of the year, so hopefully we can do that by December, but we talked about that, Blake. So, thank you. All right, any other questions? Great, thanks, everyone. Agenda item number nine is a written briefing. Items that have been asked just in advance of that, that if somebody from the administration's able to answer this right now, or if we can get an update to it soon, was some council member had asked about the status of call to hall, and how that relates to this briefing. Mayor or Vicky Bennett from Sustainability, do either of you want to give an update on that right now, or would you want to give an update on that at a future meeting?
I'm, I'm happy to give an update if you'd like. There really isn't a lot of new information. We did get started on looking at possibilities and what options we would have, but we have been completely overwhelmed by windstorm cleanup. So since that time, we really haven't had a chance to talk and move forward on it.
Yes, Mayor Menon?
Yes, Vicky, Vicky's absolutely right about the status of the conversation, but I just want you to know that we have been working on this and trying to figure out how to balance, you know, Councilmember Johnston has brought, I think, the majority of the concerns about what the former system was and what the current system is, and we're trying to come up with a balanced approach to that, that may be some sort of a hybrid. So know that it's in, it is in process. Lisa Schaefer is also helping us liaison these options and ideas. So hopefully we'll have something to bring to you in the next couple of months.
Excellent, thank you. All right, and that brings us to our standing items, which is a report of the Chair and Vice Chair. I don't have anything to report, and neither does Andrew, because he's not here. So number 11 is report and announcements from the Executive Director.
And I don't have any either, unless you want to talk at all about the structure that we're looking at, structures of how we can be helpful to you better in the council meetings.
Yeah, just if we want to briefly talk about that, and then did you want to make an announcement about grants? Or using? No.
I'm drawing a blank on that one.
Oh, you talked about making an announcement about using grant money for funding positions. Did you want to make that announcement today?
Mr. Chair, I think that's one that we'll bring back to you next week. It has to do with one of the grant applications from earlier this year, and it's just an update, but we'll bring the details back next week. Okay?
Great, thank you.
That's scary. No. Okay, so just, just a quick heads up, we've had conversations with several council members and with others. The council meetings, we've had a lot of input from individuals who want to testify at the beginning, at the hearings that you have scheduled typically, at the beginning of your council meeting. So those that are legally required, the items on land use issues, those required by policy on fee issues, and people are requesting that we go back to the way it was done before, where those hearings took place first, and then the public comment occurs later in the evening, so that people can have some sense of when their item will be on the agenda, and they actually have the opportunity to get in and make their comments. So we, as a staff, will be working on that to see what we can figure out. We have a few ideas we would need to work with IMS and the City Recorder, but we will keep working on that and be back to you.
Great, thanks. Okay, and that takes us to item 12. We do not have a tentative closed session, so that is all we have for today. Thanks, council members. We'll stand adjourned. See you next week.